888 Clean LA or visit the website at www.smarthgardening.com. Call or log on today to discover how you can think smart and get with the program.
The June 12, 2023 regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. On account of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom webinar. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to Speak Forum to the Clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Gassanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Protemurin.
Here.
Mayor Silverstein.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. I see nobody is in the room from the public. Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
No, we don't have any participants or raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, then we will now recess to closed session to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. We will reconvene at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter as we are finished to begin the regular session and hear the closed session report. We're in recess. Can you talk into one of these lenses?
Yep.
Testing one, two. Test, test.
Sounds fine, but I don't know what triggers it. I don't know if it's the speed.
Yeah, just a little bit. Not like too hard, obviously, but.
If that's our issue and it's just like a sitting there thing, then we need to.
What, he's kicking something?
Yeah, like literally, he was going to the floor. I put the plate down, so.
Was it, was it not down before?
No.
Testing one, two, three.
The plate's up.
Up a little bit. But it was fully open the last time.
Testing one, two. Oh, they're already coming out?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Why does it have to be open anywhere?
Were you unplugging these Ethernet cables and plugging them back in? Is that what you were doing?
There's two of them. There's one that says mic one and mic two.
Yeah.
Testing one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. It sounds good for now.
I don't, I don't know what would cause it. I don't know if it's like a time thing or a levels thing or a...
Just like good old XLR, man.
Yeah, well, I think the whole system is Ethernet.
Yeah, it is.
Or you just go splurge for the wireless stuff. You need a $10,000 buy-in canvas. I know.
Testing one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Was it just his mic that was crackling?
No, when that happens, the whole system will do it. It's only happened once before. It happened like on the first day.
The worst part, too, is you can't do it discreetly. You have to come up here. Yeah.
Testing one, two, three.
But I don't know what the... Credentials. Worst case, it won't be a bad thing.
It didn't come down at all.
Oh, okay.
It, I don't think that would cause the... They always should be caught. What's happening is the main brain is getting overwhelmed.
Test, test. Okay.
They think that's kicking. Alex has told me that. I don't love the system. The system seems to be a little old. It seems to be stable. That is the best system. It's so simple and it's brand new and every piece is like purposely did it. And that's, that's my favorite one because I never.
It used to go down every... All right, welcome back.
For the moment, we'll keep it on it though.
Oh, the power was good?
Oh, the roof and my face come up. Well, transitions, there's not like my, my transition slides for me.
Not yet. So there's on here, you could zoom like this. I didn't start that, like start the meeting up here. Have this set up too. That's the active one. That's the... I described that one as a safe. I don't really, I didn't hear it out here. Heard a little crackling. My galaxies were just talking before they left, but I'm like... That call enough. No, you said you would be home. It's not, it's not critical, but they...
What if we just log them in?
It will, they probably be okay.
Testing one, two, three. There's two. Testing one, two, three.
That's the...
Okay, June 12, 2023, regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called back to order. On account of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom webinar. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Gristanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Protemmure.
Here.
Mayor Silverstein.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. May we please have a closed session report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At 5:30 PM, the City Council met an open session then recessed to closed session for the items listed on the posted agenda. All five council members were present and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June 2, 2023, with the amended agenda posted on June 9, 2023. And Mayor, if you'd like to, before approval of the agenda, would you like to have a pledge of allegiance?
Before the approval? Sure. And would you like to lead us in it tonight?
Certainly.
Oh, I see. I missed it. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you for the reminder. I thought it came later. I didn't see it. Okay, so I understand there's some suggestions from the city on the agenda tonight. Before we get a motion on the agenda, would you like to explain what you're proposing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, wanted to ask if we could possibly move up the item 7A for the youth commission appointments. Also wanted to, so that's one request. Also wanted to note that we're asking to delay one ceremonial item, which is the presentation of the Jake Grealish Citizenship Award. We'll need to reschedule that to a date uncertain. Unfortunately, the recipient cannot be here this evening. And then the final request would be, if possible, to move up the discussion on the 6A, the Malibu Library set-aside funds, just so that we can get to that while we still have the folks on and available from the county library.
Okay. And do you have a specific proposal as to where we ought to move 6A and 7A to?
I would suggest or recommend that you move 7A to right after the adoption of the consent calendar. And then from there, you know, if you wanted to go to 6A or put that a little bit later, but just so that we could get to that this evening.
Okay, so before we take a roll call and see if there's any other suggestions, does anybody have an objection to continuing 1A and to moving 7A and then followed by 6A to follow the consent calendar? Any objections?
No objections.
Okay, so we'll make that a motion. Does anybody have any other motions for any other proposed changes or additions?
The only other, the only other change would be to make a note that we're going to adjourn in the memories of Leah Isaak, Barry Hilton, and John.
John Wall.
John Wall.
We've done John Wall earlier in one of the earlier meetings. We were already close to meeting him, so I just, I don't think we want to repeat that.
What was the second name, Paul?
Barry Hilton.
Okay. And as, I know that we had gotten a request from some people to adjourn in memory of John Wall, but as Steve notes, as Kelsey brought to my attention earlier today, we already did that at a prior meeting. So we'll acknowledge that we've done that before. So the suggestion is to adjourn in memory of Leah Isaak's and Barry Hilton.
Correct.
Okay. So with those various changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you all for that. So the first item of business will be item 1B, recognition of public safety responders. Can Public Safety Director Susan Duenas and public safety responders please join me at the podium?
I'm feeling very safe right now. Okay, so on May 22, the City Council declared Saturday, June 10, as Public Safety Responder Appreciation Day. This was done in conjunction with the Public Safety Expo that was held on June 10. Malibu's public safety responders provide critical emergency services, including the following: Sheriff's Department, who work tirelessly to respond to calls for service and patrol our beaches and roadways to keep us safe; Fire Department, who respond to thousands of calls for assistance each year for medical assistance, fires, hazardous incidents, and rescues; the Malibu SERT team maintains the city's emergency bins, has established a radio and satellite system to help with emergency communications, and assisted with all of our COVID testing days; the volunteers and patrol write thousands of parking tickets and assist the sheriff's department at hundreds of vehicle incidents each years, accidents each year; arson watch, more than 80 arson watch members patrol the community during red flag weather to look for fire starts so they may be extinguished before they turn into disasters. So tonight, we would like to express our sincere gratitude and recognize Malibu's public safety responders with thank you books signed by the City Council, city staff, and Malibu community, as well as custom-made flags for our sheriff and fire department. Susan, would you like to say anything?
Yes. I just want to say thank you for myself as the director of public safety. We couldn't, I mean, you are, everyone here is really the Department of Public Safety because you guys are the one who do all the work, all, whether you're volunteer, paid, everybody, it's a team effort and it's, we're so proud of this community working to keep us safe. I just feel very lucky to be here with all of you, so thank you. All right, so we've been collecting signatures. Where? This is for the fire department. We have signatures associated with it. Of course, I want to share with the Chris department. We're in March, so, right there. And then we have these custom-made flags, one for Vaughn Porson, he put the new substation, we got one over there for the fire department, you can hang either, whichever station you want.
They're great.
Yes, so you always remember how much we appreciate you every single day. And so we want to exhibit photo ops, so you guys really have to move up here.
Should we bring the City Council down? Should we bring the City Council down or let them stay?
Can the council members come down?
Anybody who wants to join us, why don't you come down?
Yeah. And one other thing, I want to say, I don't know how many people were at the Public Safety Expo Saturday, but my staff did an amazing job putting that together, and I just have amazing staff, and I want them to be recognized, too. Do we need to get closer?
They'll tell us. Gabe, can you guys tuck in a tiny bit over there? Yeah. Okay. If you can't see my camera, then you're not in the picture, so make sure you can actually see the camera, and then your face will be in the picture.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's a monitor.
Go away. Wow, you won't fit in this camera, okay.
Okay, we're done?
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
He brought it, but he can't get to it.
All right, we're going to continue now. Okay, thank you. So that brings us to 2A. We now hear communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda. Remote participants, please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item, and we already have the sign-in cards for people that are here, so we have one speaker, that's Ryan Ember. Ryan, are you here? I see you.
Well, I thought I'd shock you tonight and wear red pants. The antenna pole, again, at 23525 Civic Center Way, as they like to now call its address, which is the courthouse, even though it's west of the old sheriff's station, which was 23555 Civic Center Way, that needs to be processed by your diligent contract staff attorneys to remove it because it is in complete code violation, it's against municipal code. The applicant has demonstrated a lack of any genuine ability to abide by the conditions set forth by the city on that development project. The pole is too tall, and it is causing conflicts with the established helipad use behind the buildings, which is a paramount use for evacuation and mutual aid to this city. And for three years, Los Angeles County has managed to transmit their radio signals just fine throughout this civic center area without a tower or pole. So there needs to be some explanation given because when they applied to the city for this semi-commercial use, they claimed that this was for an emergency use. It's not. It's for 24 hours a day, 365-day regular use by the county and for the county to sublease it for commercial purposes for income. And it's an expanded use, which was not disclosed adequately at the time that this concept was approved. The 91 feet that it was explained to the FAA as its actual height is not what was applied to for the city, it was only 75 feet. So we have an established temporary facility at the other side of the same parcel of county-owned property that's been operating just fine in the interim for the last three or four years, and that may be the appropriate candidate site location for a camouflage facility or incorporated into the rooftop structure of the building that would serve all the purposes that the county needs or the commercial purpose. So I would urge you to use your contract city prosecutor firm for code enforcement and start the ball rolling. That thing needs to come down. It is the incorrect color markings to ever comply, so even as a structure that's not working as a telecommunications tower, it is of the incorrect color and is not approvable and is in violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
No, we don't have any raised hands on Zoom.
I think that might be the reference.
Sorry, as I spoke, we did have one raised hand on Zoom, we have one speaker. We'll hear from Joe Drummond.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Silverstein and City Council. I'm grateful that you're adjourning the meeting in Leah Isaac's name. She was just a beautiful soul and only 16, so it's a real loss to our school, community, and my family. I just want to also say that I just, I don't want to be here, but I have to be here because I want to acknowledge that my husband was also on arson watch, and he couldn't be here because he's attending the wake for our family. And also regarding the tower that Ryan was just talking about, I know we did discuss it in our Public Works Commission meeting, and they, we were told to talk, to bring it up at the Planning Commission in the Planning Department, and we did last week, and they didn't respond at all to us, so I do think that either the telecommunications commission needs to be reinstated or that Public Works needs to hear these items in the future so that something like this doesn't just get through planning without any scrutiny. And it is too high, it is, it is, it didn't, it was supposed to apply for a CUP before it even went up, but it went up, so it should be taken down because it hasn't even received its CUP, so I'm sure you all have an opinion on it, I'd love to hear it, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anybody else raise their hand?
No, we don't have any other raised hands from the public. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to commission or committee updates. Do we have any of those tonight?
We do have two commissioners on Zoom who'd like to provide an update, Kylie and Logan Epstein from the Youth Commission.
Let's hear them.
Good evening, Mayor Silverstein and members of City Council. My name is Logan Epstein, and I am an executive board member of the Harry Borowski Memorial Youth Commission. I am joined by my fellow youth commissioner Kylie Epstein to give her report on the accomplishments of the 2022-2023 Youth Commission. During the fiscal year, the Youth Commission conducted a canned food drive and collected over 40 canned food and non-perishable items for the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu Thanksgiving Baskets program.
Created voter registration public service announcements, which were included on the community service department's social media platforms.
Hosted a cinema Malibu movie night and collected over 150 new pairs of socks, which were donated to the nonprofit organization Socks of Love.
Collected toy donations for the Los Angeles County Fire Department Foundation.
Hosted a youth government summit, countering Scott Houston, director for West Basin Water District, and Ann Buxley, the Malibu Polite Lariat.
Conducted a baby diapers and wipes drive and collected over 15 boxes of items that were donated to the Safe Place for Youth Venice.
Collected over 50 toiletry items for the People's Concern of Los Angeles.
Attended a virtual organics recycling workshop presented by Kim Nielsen from Solidway Solutions and were given the opportunity to pick up a free kitchen caddy from City Hall.
And volunteered at various community service department special events, including Tiny Todd Olympics, Breakfast with Santa, and Chumash Day.
All in all, the 2022-2023 Youth Commission donated over 400 items benefiting local nonprofit organizations and provided over 200 hours of community service. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to represent the youth of Malibu.
Thank you. Do we have another? I thought we had a second person.
I think they've, they've.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do we have any other commission or committee reports?
No, you don't have any other commission reports.
Okay, thank you. Steve, that takes us to city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor Silverstein and members of the council. First, I'd like to again ask our Public Safety Director Susan Duenas to come back up to the podium and give us a brief recap on the Public Safety Expo this weekend. Or wherever you would like, Susan, sorry.
If you go up there, we can see you on the TV thing. I should say, others can see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, this past Saturday, we had our Public Safety Expo, which was also Public Safety Responder Appreciation Day, and it was, it went really well. We had, a lot of people came, a lot of people had a lot of good things to say about, people had a great time, they could learn how to use a fire extinguisher, they could go into earthquake simulator, talk to someone from Caltech, visit the firemen, VOPs, arson watch, forestry, they could get a free tree from forestry. We had a food vendors, we had a raffle, we were raffling off generators, emergency generators, which was a big hit. And one of the best parts about a lot of this, most of it was paid for by Cal Fire Fire Prevention Grant, so, all around good event. And my staff, who actually have left now, did an amazing job putting it together. They did most of the work, all three fire liaisons and our newest emergency coordinator and Sarah and Luis. It was a team effort, it was definitely like a good bonding experience, too, because it's a lot of work if you've ever done anything like this, it's a lot of work, a lot of details, and I'm just so proud of my staff and I'm just so happy that it turned out so well. We had a great time, we ended up, it was like having a party, it felt like, it was really fun. So I know, you know, Paul was there, Mary Ann was there, Doug, you were there, right? Yeah. And it was a great time, so, that's about it.
I got a bunch of calls, people love the hamburgs also.
Oh, yeah, I heard the food was great. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Susan.
Well, thank you, Susan, for that report, and just again, I just wanted to thank Susan and her team for, I know it's a lot of work to put that together, and I think they did a fantastic job, and appreciate that the community was well received by the community. Next, if I, I second that. Next, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call up Sergeant Sotlin for a report from Los Angeles Station before I complete the remainder of my report.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. Good evening. First, thank you for honoring us today. We hear it a lot, but it never gets old to hearing it, so we appreciate your thanks and your appreciation. The, I've got five items to talk about today. So first is the statistics from the past month. Our Part 1 crimes for the month of May have gone down 18.6% since the same time last year, so we're continuing the downward trend, even with the string of vehicle burglaries that happened, we're still negative. To that extent, we had, I'm sure as everyone knows, we had two incidents where multiple vehicles were broken into, and on both of them, one vehicle was stolen in each of those instances, so two vehicles total. So one of those vehicles was actually recovered in South Central Los Angeles by LAPD, the other one's still outstanding. Our detective bureau has identified the suspect vehicle in the incident, on the second incident, and the suspects are still outstanding, but the detectives are working on it. I wanted to let you know, last week, we did a parking enforcement overnight, Thursday night into Friday. We issued 91 citations and towed six vehicles, and we worked from about midnight to 4:00 AM that night, and we worked with the VOPs, the Malibu VOPs, and the Malibu Special Assignment deputies that you work for, or that you pay for. So, yeah, we issued 91 sites and towed six vehicles, and then also with us was Luis Flores from the Public Safety Department. He came out with us, and during the operation, we made contact with a female living in our RV down at Las Tunas Beach, and she refused to come out of the RV because she was fearful of having her RV towed. And so we, while we went with the intention of towing her RV, we turned it around and we were able to connect her with Luis to have her have services through the city, so she actually emailed Luis to. So she actually emailed Luis today asking for help. So we turned that into a positive and we're going to get her some help. The beach team is ongoing right now during the weekends, starting full-time here in July. But to date for this year, since the beach team has started, we've issued 188 citations for alcohol on the beach, 45 citations for dogs on the beach, 204 traffic citations, 1,382 parking citations, and we've towed 106 vehicles so far. And we haven't even started full-time yet. The next item, I know racing on PCH is a hot topic right now and the public is very upset about it. This past Saturday, during the AIDS lifecycle event, which happened here in Malibu, where there is about 2,000 bicycle riders going down PCH, deputies were out on patrol and they observed two Lamborghinis driving at a high rate of speed near Los Flores Road and they were able to conduct a traffic stop on those Lamborghinis and impounded both of them. Both of them had expired registration and one of them did not have insurance. So those drivers were cited for those violations and the Lamborghinis were impounded. So to that end, I know that's, you know, that's during the daytime and a lot of the racing occurs in the middle of the night. So we have a saturation patrol and racing enforcement operation planned within this next week. I don't want to give out the details because people might be listening, but that's within the next week, so. That's all I have, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Well, I want to thank you for all the good work you guys are doing. I mean, you know, this is a relatively, relatively safe place in the first place, but it wouldn't be relatively safe if we didn't have you all here to keep it that way. I do have a question for you. What's the threshold for impounding a vehicle versus just giving somebody a citation?
The, if they're driving in a reckless manner and that's, there's a combination of factors that go with that, whether it's pedestrians, the speed limit in that area, schools, the traffic volume. But if they, if the deputy can determine that they're driving in a reckless manner, he can impound it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Soderland. Continuing with my report, so I reported on a couple of things that I attended. I was happy to attend both the middle school and high school graduations last week. It's always wonderful to see the use of Malibu moving on to the next chapter in life. It's always very inspiring to be part of that. Also, we did have a Commissioner and Brown Act training, which we held on May 31st. So thank you to everybody who participated in that. Also, want to again thank the council and everybody for the Blue Flag Award that the city was presented with on May 31st. For those who are not aware, that was presented to Westward Beach. And Malibu was now one of the first of two beaches in the United States that have received the Blue Flag Award, which recognizes achievements in 30 criteria in environmental education and information, environmental management, safety and services, social responsibility, and responsible tourism. So the, want to thank the members of council to be on, who are on hand for the official raising of the flag for, for the Blue Flag. Also, happy to announce that the, the Malibu Little, well, thanks to everybody with Malibu Little League community and staff, we're getting the snack shack up and going. It did officially open up on March 31st, just in time for the final few days of the season, so happy to see that up and going. Wanted to report that there was a sewage spill that occurred late Wednesday afternoon last week. It occurred when a vehicle was traveling on Malibu Canyon Road and involved in a car accident and it struck some equipment, some above-ground equipment that carries the sewage water. The damage to the equipment caused the water to travel on Malibu Canyon Road towards Potter Lane and ultimately did get into the creek. The sewer line is owned by Pepperdine University and it conveys wastewater from the university to the Tapia Water Reclamation Facility over the hill. So we are continuing to get more information on that and we'll keep you apprised on the cleanup efforts on that accident. Tranquus Bridge, we have been trying to press Caltrans to make some improvements to safety and paving. And we have been informed that they are going to expect to be out this month to do pothole repair and to smooth out the pavement where that construction is going. So we're happy to look forward to that. And then before I forget, I want to make sure that I welcome two of our new members of staff who are here this evening. We are happy to introduce our two new deputy city clerks, Christina Munoz and Jason Lawrence. They are over there this evening, so give them a warm welcome. So this is really good for the city and I think good for our city clerk, who's been basically operating a three-staff department with one person for most of the last couple of years. So we're happy to get Kelsey that help. And again, welcome to Christina and Jason. They're fitting in very well and we're happy to have your services here at the city. A couple of other things, just to quickly report on, I think as Sergeant Soderland mentioned, we do have the impound yard up and operating now. It first opened on Saturday, May 27th. So since then, we've had about 90 vehicles that have been towed to the impound yard. And again, just to remind everybody where that is now, at the high school. And that appears to be, appears to be a good location for everybody. We've not received any complaints to date and it seems to be very good in terms of working well with the Sheriff's Department and the tow company. So that, I think that's a positive report there. It's been a while since I reported on our rebuild statistics. Just to date for Woolsey Fire, I know we're coming up now, but on another anniversary, but to date, we have 128 single-family dwellings that have been completed. We have another 258 where the building permits have been issued. So those are moving along. Also wanted to report that tomorrow, there will be a meeting for the Malibu Creek Ecosystem Restoration Project. California State Parks and California Trout are hosting this public workshop here at Malibu City Hall in the multipurpose room. It's tomorrow, June 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. They will provide an overview of the project, highlight their current work, and give the public an opportunity to ask the project team any questions. That is it for my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Takes us to city council member reports. Who would like to go first? Paul, why don't you start?
Okay, I'm going to start by taking up where Steve left off and mentioning the fact that that watershed improvement project is actually the removal of the Ringe Dam. And so I would hope that there will be a lot of people out to listen to what they have to say and try to convince them to do something that is more sensible than what the Army Corps of Engineers favors. During the last three weeks, we've done a lot of different things. I think probably the first thing was the Blue Flag presentation, which really loved and I thought that it was great. And if you're going down Westward Beach Road, it's right there at that first bend where the restrooms are. And you should drive by and take a look at it, stop your car, walk out towards where the flag is and just appreciate the fact that it really is that nice a spot. I went to both the middle and high school graduations, always an emotional event and seeing the kids go through that and then reflecting that, of course, I wouldn't do middle school or high school again on a bet. So they deserve a lot of credit for getting through that and I hope that it's just the beginning of wonderful things happening for them. I went to the Brown Act training and there are some new wrinkles in the law and I thought it was very valuable. I'm glad I went. And that's pretty much it, I think. Oh, no, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. Mary Ann, would you like to go next, please?
Sure. Mine's a bit longer. I attended CPA Board Meeting and their fifth anniversary celebration. So our CPA, our Clean Power Alliance is five years old now. And we were one of the cities that was honored of being the first cities to join in on the CPA. So that was really exciting to be part of that history. I attended the Little League Parade and the closing ceremonies on June 3rd. It was very exciting. I got great feedback from everybody that was there. The kids had a great time bringing back that tradition that had long been held in Malibu and got to enjoy a burger at the Little League Snack Shack and just really enjoyed the day. It was a gorgeous day out, both here in the Civic Center and at Bluffs Park. And I want to make sure a big thanks goes out to Nick Shergott, who is the president of the league yet right now, Jake Lingo for his great driving abilities, Alicia Peak for all the hard work that she did getting the parade together and everything else that she does, and Dane Skophammer for all his work on the snack shack and cooking a great burger. And I also want to make sure we thank our city staff for that because I know without their hard work, that wouldn't have come together. So thank you very much. I also attended the graduation ceremony for Malibu High School and the certificate promotions for the middle school. And I've got to tell you, Principal Patrick Miller and Principal Melissa Andino do such a great job with those kids and the talent. We had several students perform songs and the orchestra and the band. And I'm always blown away about the talent that we have here in this community. I attended the Public Safety Expo and I want to make sure I thank Susan and the public safety staff. They did a great job with that. Lot of great vendors, the amazing community volunteers, that we would not be able to have a safe city without every single person that takes time out of their day to dedicate to our community. So thank you very much. I also went to the Brown Act Training and very informative. I attended the Blue Flag Presentation and that's quite an honor for our community to be recognized as the, having the clean, environmentally safe beaches. And the program is really remarkable and I encourage everybody to look into that. Go with my thanks before I move to that one. I wanted to thank the Youth Commission. You guys have been really busy this last year and I look forward to hearing what you're going to be doing this next year. And again, I'm sure that that wouldn't be possible without the great help from our staff here. Kate Gallo and Kristen Reyes go really help those kids, give direction to that. I did a ride along with the Lost Hills Sheriff's Department and got a tour of the station and the ride through Malibu. It was really informative what they do on a daily basis and I just want to thank the deputies. You guys are amazing, all the different things that you have to keep track of while you're, you know, looking out and just, they're always, their eyes are going everywhere and they see everything that's going on and I really appreciate their help for that. And then the other thing I noticed, I was watching the news and I saw that Metro is moving forward with a study for congestion pricing. And one of the areas that's on the study is the 10 freeway from downtown LA to Santa Monica. And I think this is something that we should keep an eye on and give some input on because it's going to affect every single person that comes to Malibu. If this congestion pricing is put into place, anybody who takes the 10 to get to Malibu, every person who works in Malibu, our staff, housekeepers, landscapers, construction workers, every single person is going to be subject to this. And I think it's something that we really need to have input and make sure that we're aware of it and that they understand the impacts to our community for that. So I would like to just stay on top of that one. And I think that's it for now. Thank you for letting us know about the sewage spill. I was concerned about that. Good to know it wasn't one of our properties, but unfortunately, one of our upstream residents or agency groups. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Doug?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. First off, on the toes, I was on Public Safety Commission last year when we did the trial run at the temporary toe site and it was a struggle. We learned a lot from that and with, what, 91 toes or so far? And this isn't even a hot season yet. We, the beaches are not fully impacted. So this is really working well and thanks to the city staff and thanks to the Sheriff's Department and the VOPs and everyone else that's involved in this. It's a wonderful, wonderful step for making the parking issues, especially on Point Doom, more reasonable. You can't, I can't spend enough time telling you how bad it was there in the prior years and hopefully this is a step in the right direction. The Blue Flag event was outstanding for me. You look at, look at what we have here, sometimes we become complacent. We say, gee, we see the ocean every day. And Westward Beach is one of two Blue Flag beaches in the United States for this global project that's been going on for a number of years. So this is quite an accomplishment and I think Paul said it, or someone said it, just go down and stand where the flag is. It is a moving experience to see how wonderful and beautiful that is. We are blessed with great beaches and great views and we just need to protect them. As far as what I did, city planning meeting on the 24th, we did that. I attended the Boys and Girls Club Kindness Event at the middle and high school. I got my name on the kindness wall, assigned it myself and got a kindness card. Wonderful program of Boys and Girls Club. You have to see all the good work that they do, especially for mental health and interaction with the kids. It's more than just going out and dribbling a basketball. They do a lot of wonderful things. It's easy to support them. Brown Act Training, did that with several of the other council members. I met with the VOPs at the beginning of their night sweeps that the sergeant was talking about. I was there at 11 o'clock. I didn't stick around to midnight. I've done this a couple of times and it is, you basically give up your night from 11 to 4 o'clock in the morning, cruising the city. And then we have a different town after the sun goes down, especially after about 10 or 11 o'clock. And, you know, tip of the hat to the people that work that shift for us and the Sheriff's Department and the VOPs. Thank you all very much, especially the VOPs. I think there were eight VOPs and probably eight sheriff's deputies. It was a true turnout to go cover the city and that's what it takes, 21 miles long. It's not easily done by just one or two cars. Dropped by the Safety Expo at City Hall and you're right, those were killer burgers. I looked at those and it, gee, many Christmas. They look like a steak on a bun. Let's see, the one other thing I want to mention, I think all the city council members got a book in our mailbox. It's this book right here. And I just want to acknowledge the quality of the work that went into this and I just want to read the insert cards in it. It says, "Through the Arts and Education Program in coordination with the poet laureate committee, Malibu Arts Commission, and the Santa Monica Malibu Schools, students participated in poetry writing workshops in '22 and '23." And you look at this and it's the middle school, elementary schools, and some of the high school students. The artwork and the stories are moving, especially as you watch the kids age and their writing. So it's quite a tribute and if you haven't seen this book, I encourage you to pick one up. I'm not sure exactly where you get them, but it's another example of our commission and work here and the Parks and Rec Group doing a wonderful job with this. That's all I have. Back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Doug. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to repeat some of the stuff that's already been said. Sheriff, thank you very much for what you're doing. Somehow, we got to get your results out to the public more. I mean, this is what people have been deeding on us for, for a long time, improving the safety in the city. You're obviously doing that. I don't know how many people know how effective you guys have been in actually accomplishing that. So we got to figure out a better way to publicize what you're doing because it really is an extraordinary effort and it is helping us make the city as safe as we possibly can. So thank you very much and say thanks to all the guys that are out there working with you. Been participating in our Monday Morning Cal Strategy Meetings. I also attended the Little League Parade. I'm not sure who had more fun, the kids or the parents. It was a great event and everybody enjoyed themselves. I want to echo Paul's and Steve's comments regarding the meeting tomorrow night on the removal of Ringe Dam. This is a major project. I mean, I don't know how many truckloads of dirt they plan on pumping up and down Malibu Canyon, but it-- but it, it, it hooze everybody to get involved and understand what's going on because it's going to have an impact on just about everybody here in Malibu. Yeah, appreciate that. I originally heard that the sewage spill came from HRL. So I, it's good to get the information out there so everybody knows exactly what the heck happened. And just one other, one other item. There was an article that appeared in the Orange County, whatever the heck the newspaper is, a register or whatever they call it. Okay, a couple, a week ago, week and a half ago, it talked about declining enrollment in our schools. This is not the first time these articles have shown up. But it was, you know, fairly emphatic about the fact that, you know, the enrollment is going down and they sort of want to make people aware of what was going on with that thing. And it's not surprising because I, what I was doing last week is taking a look at the Parks and Rec Plan that came out in 2015, I think it was, to sort of get an idea of what people had asked for before. And in that report, it talked about what the population was going to look like in 2025. And it had, you know, the 18 to below demographic was going to be 15%. Well, we hit that in 2023. So this reduction in, you know, people having kids is real. And I don't mean this to be, you know, sort of a downer, but it's just something I think we got to keep our eyes on. I don't know how that impacts the negotiations that are taking place with Santa Monica. I don't know how this, if there's a threshold that says if it falls too low, what it does to our school in terms of, you know, having a school, I don't know. It's just, it's just something I think we should have on our radar screen and think about because it's real. I mean, this is not the first, there are tons of these articles out there, all of them, you know, heading in the same direction. So with that, Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so for my part, first of all, I want to thank the public speakers. We only had two tonight. I think that may be a record and a few letters that we got. The only comment I'm going to make on what was said, especially by Ryan, you know, that communications tower is an insult to Malibu. It hasn't, they had no business putting it there in the first place, even if they had the right to do it, which I understand they didn't, but it's an insult to our community and I would expect the county to care more. So I'm hopeful that in the continued discussions with them, they can be reasoned with and not, not care as much about the commercialization of their tower as much as the aesthetic of our town. I attended many of the same things that a lot of others already described. I didn't attend all of them, but I attended many of them, so I'm not going to get into all the details. The only one I'm going to say is that the Little League Parade was a hoot. Someone said, I'm not sure whether the parents or the kids had more fun. I'm not sure whether we might not have had more fun, but it was a hoot. And it was, the, bringing up the rear was a truck full of young girls who were singing "We Will Rock You" from Queen. It was just, it was just great to watch. So with that, oh, and on the school, Steve's comment about school enrollment declining, you know, if anything, that probably highlights the fact that our residents are overpaying for the split between us and Santa Monica. Because I know a lot of people say the less students we have, the less we need to split. And I don't agree with that. The less students we have, actually, the more we're overpaying for the Santa Monica schools. So that, if anything, that's a further argument for dividing and dividing more fairly to us. So with that, that moves to consent calendar.
Just, and I apologize, I forgot one thing. Over the course of the last week and a half, I've been working with some of the residents up in Sycamore Park. And as, I did another tour up there and Joe Edmiston is putting up signs and, you know, a whole bunch of trail maps leading up toward the end of Escondido Drive there. So what they, we did is put together a little package that said, here, well, here's what we understand. The trail that Joe is talking about doesn't really exist. Back in May 2016, the city council voted to abandon those trails that are heading through Ramirez Canyon and through Escondido. So Joe is, you know, advertising a trail that really shouldn't, he shouldn't be doing. So we put together a set of materials that identify what his maps look like, what his signs look like, a listing of the, from the city, from the city council, the resolution to dismiss the trails. And Steve, if I could, I didn't get a chance to copy. If I could get this to you, if you could make a copy of this and give it to Trevor. Because Trevor, I think we, I mean, when I talk to the people in Sycamore Park, their basic comment is, geez, the city's not doing anything for us, right? And we can't, we don't see them even making effort to try and at least talk to Joe. So take a look at that. If there's something we can do to sort of get him to change his signs so he's not advertising something that really doesn't exist, I think we'll be sending a message to those folks who really do care. So anything you can do to help us there, thank you very much, Mayor. I'm sorry. Back to you.
That's okay. So in fairness, if anyone else has anything else they'd like to say, speak up. Okay, consent calendar. We will now consider the consent calendar. Remote participants, please raise your hand. And Zoom, if you'd like to speak on an item on the consent calendar. I do not have any speaker slips. Is there anybody on, well, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to pull something?
I do not see any raised hands from the public on Zoom.
Okay, anybody on council want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I just have one comment on 3B9 that will be quick. So pull that one.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3B9.
We need to abstain on approval of minutes. I do.
Your speaker's off.
I need to abstain on 3B3, the approval of minutes. I want to make a quick comment on the treasurer's report and that is...
3B10.
3B10.
So we're going to pull 3B10?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, okay.
Don't make the comment yet. Are there any other requests to pull anything from the consent calendar? Okay, get a motion to approve the consent calendar noting Doug's abstention to 3B3 and pulling 3B9 and 3B10.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Uring?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes, with a note that I did review the minutes from April 11th, so I'm voting on those also.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to 3B9. And that was Steve's item. Was that Steve or, that was Steve? Okay, so for the record, that is amendments to professional service agreements for school district separation.
Right, and I have no problem with that. I got a couple of phone calls over the last couple of weeks asking me how much money we've spent, the city has spent promoting the separation, and I didn't know the answer. So I got ahold of Rob Houston and he gave me the number. It's about $600,000. It's money well spent. So it's just, anybody's been looking at that. That's the number. That's a combination of legal fees and the two organizations we use to help us accumulate the information. So just, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
You want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve 3B9.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Uring?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Doug pulled 3B10, which is the investment report for the month ending April 30, 2023. It's just a receive and file, but, so there's no need to vote on it, but Doug, whatever comment you want to make, go ahead.
Just quick comments. If you look at this closely, we're up at the end of April to almost $99 million in this fund. And interest rates have changed materially since a couple of years ago. Those of us that had bank accounts that we'd receive a tenth of a percent, we're looking at T-bills today paying over 5%. And I know I've had conversations with the city manager and the assistant city manager about this. But one thing I want to mention is the city treasurer is actually a part-time employee of the city council, not the city staff. And it's incumbent upon us at that level to administer this process. And I'll just say from a cash management point of view, we've got 46 million of this $99 million invested only overnight. The average interest rate on that's about 1.7% in a 5% world. We're, we're short what we could do and just save T-bills by somewhere around a million dollars to a million and a half dollars a year. So it's going to be something I, we need to address. I've talked to the city manager about how we might do this, but I think the city council will need to address it at a future date. It's just a different world than when we set up what we have today. And I think once we get the budget out of the way, it'll be more time to spend on this. So that's my, that's my comment. Just a heads up.
Okay, thank you, Doug. And good save.
Doug, you've got an A and F meeting coming up pretty soon, right? You going to cover that?
It's not on the agenda for the A and F, but we'll talk about it. I'll talk with the city manager and city staff and we'll try and work up a resolution or some kind of recommendation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and just technically, for the record, the city council doesn't employ the treasurer. The treasurer serves, is employed by the city and serves at the pleasure of the city council.
Oh, it's a direct report test.
Yeah, right, but they're employed by the city. Okay, so I think that ends the consent calendar and we agreed to move up 7A to the next item. So 7A is youth commission appointments. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item and you'll be called after the staff report. And I also don't have any cards, it looks like, so I don't think there are any public speakers here present. Floor's yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Silverstein and members of city council. The item before you this evening is the annual appointment to the 2324 Harry Barofsky Memorial Youth Commission. The recruitment, which lasted two months, resulted in 17 applicants that completed both the application and interview process. During the interview process, the youth commissioners shared their aspirations of volunteering and community service for Malibu. And so staff's recommendation this evening is to appoint all 17 members who completed both the application and interview process to the 2324 Youth Commission. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
You're Kate Gallo, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to extend.
Well, wait, we need, we need public comment, if there is any. Do we have any public speakers on Zoom?
We have one speaker, Preston Lilly.
Hello, my name is Preston Lilly and I would just like to really quickly say thank you so much for your consideration and admitting me to the youth commission. I'm really looking forward to being a part of it and contributing to the effort of making Malibu a better place. So thank you so much again.
Thank you, Preston. You're off to a great start. Mary Ann, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes, but before I make the motion, I will say that my daughter did serve on this commission also and so I know how important it is to our community and our youth. And I just appreciate all the work that's done with it and the great things that they do. So thank you for your leadership there.
Okay, by the way, for the record, the public comment is closed.
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to second it. I just have one quick comment, too. I read the resumes of the students and very impressive. And also I was very pleased to see it wasn't just Malibu High School. We had several representatives from some of the private schools in the area. So wonderful additions, broad coverage. Look forward to the results.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
I too was impressed by the quality of the, of the applications. And I've known a couple of kids who've gone through this, who ended up going to Washington to work. And, you know, I think they can be forgiven for that, but hopefully they'll come back and get involved in state politics as well.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Uring?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving right along, item 6A. We will now hear the Malibu Library Set Aside Fund item. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item and you'll be called after the staff report. And again, I don't have any cards, so there will be no public speakers in person. Staff report, please.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, the item before you is a follow-up guidance and direction the subcommittee and subsequently the council gave in the fall regarding Malibu library set aside funds for the upcoming fiscal year 2324. The library subcommittee again reviewed the items on April 18th of this year and those recommendations have been incorporated in today's report. And as a reminder, there's a prioritization process. So in November of each year, the city and county library staff meet to discuss the library set aside fund and the potential use of set aside funds for the following fiscal year. In advance of the meeting, the city council is asked to approve a prioritized list of issues to be discussed at the yearly meeting in accordance with the MOU between the county and the county of LA and the city of Malibu. Staff and library met in the fall following the direction of council, that council provided at that time. The follow-up was provided to the subcommittee in April and is now in front of you. I won't read each individual item. This is in the report that you have. In essence, the total funding request for the year is 1.4 million. There was 1.2 million on the annual request and then about 210,000 in additional items from the subcommittee recommendations. There are a few items that have asterisks next to it and those were questions that the committee asked that we provided follow-up answers to you in your packet. So real quick, the outreach librarian salary increase. There was a question of why was that increasing so much over the prior year? The answer we got from the county was essentially they hadn't kept up on the proper identification of the value or the cost of that position. Really, it has only gone up by inflation every year, approximately 3% to 5%. So it is correct now, but it was more of a catch-up on the identified amount that was listed in the report. What was the continued unreserved balance? What is the purpose of that? What costs have been covered by this reserve in past years? The unreserved balance is really for any programs that come up after the formal city council approval and it would provide some flexibility for the libraries to use funds for basically unexpected expenses. And then what costs have been covered by this reserve in past years? None. They haven't used that before. And then there was a question of does, what's the percentage of Malibu usage for the Family Place Program? This year's funds would be exclusively for Malibu's Family Place Program, formerly known as the Smart Start Program. The funds would be used for a refresh of the Malibu early literacy collection, furniture supplies and staff training. And then the last question we had outstanding from the subcommittee, what are the specific tools that would be part of the recommended tool lending library? And that list has also been provided in your packet. This rounds out the list of the initial 1.2 million. We also had additional requests from the Boys and Girls Club and Malibu High School totaling about 50,000 between the two. This is similar to the usages in the past year. And then the subcommittee recommended some additional programs. So the 50,000 that was requested from the Boys and Girls Club and Malibu Public Schools. And then also the subcommittee recommended 85,000 for the Malibu Film Society Series and also 75,000 for Malibu Centric Legacy Park Educational Program. So that in total, that's 210,000 in addition to the 1.2. That rounds out your 1.4 for the year. And also in your packet, we, the library closed out the fiscal year 2122 year with 19.3 million remaining in fund balance. So your recommended actions tonight are to approve the fiscal year 2324 use of set aside funds and staff and representatives from the library should be available to answer your questions.
Are there any public speakers?
There's one raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Hi again. As I sent in an earlier email today, I do, I'm glad that the set aside funds are going towards Malibu. And I know you do, I think you do give some funds to the school for color printers, but it would be great to have some kind of mega color printer for the library so that students can go after school when the school's not open to print whatever they need. And also, also I'm wondering, what, what about the tax monies that were wrongly gifted to the county? Well, are those, are those ever going to be addressed? Are those going to be returned to Malibu? I mean, the county has tons of our tax money, so they should be able to afford to give whatever ever we deserve back. And I don't know what else. I think, I think it's just a, a great, great thing. Oh, the, the Malibu Centric Legacy Park Education Program. I think if you have something, they have wonderful birds there. And I don't know if you ever do bird watching walks or anything like that, but that would be something great. Our LA birders can bring people there, but it's a beautiful spot for bird watching. So I like that idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any other public comments?
No, that was our only raised hand.
Okay, so that closes public comment. Before we go to council for comments, I just want to state, I think the statement was that it's being proposed to council to approve these expenditures. We're approving a recommendation to the county of these expenditures. We don't have the authority to spend anything.
That's correct.
Comments or questions? Comments or questions?
Paul?
I'm in favor of the list that we have reviewed today and hope that we can get voted on positively as quickly as possible.
Steve?
Yeah, I would like to second Joe Drummond's recommendation for some kind of a color printer in the library. I think those things are very valuable to the schoolkids as they're doing their projects. I think that's a good idea. The Malibu-centric Legacy Park Education Program. Mary Ann, is that what you called me on earlier?
Yes.
Okay, have they made any progress in getting?
I'm talking to staff about it right now, and then we'll we'll determine the best course of action.
Okay.
Working with Steve and Community Services Director right now.
Okay. And then I've got one question for Doug. Doug, you're the banker in the community, right? All right. So here's the question. I'm a business here in Malibu, and I want to move. I want to move to a new location. So I go to your bank and say, I want to move. Here's where I want to move to, and I need $85,000 to do that. You going to give me that money without seeing anything?
No, you gotta you gotta have a proposal and a package on how we're going to get repaid.
What do you want to see? For example?
Well, typically, projections, what the loan's going to be secured by, credit rating.
Okay, and you're making a point I made back when the Melville Film Society decided they need 85 grand. We have not seen a document from the Melville Film Society saying, why I need $85,000. And look, I don't have a problem with the money, okay? It's a process. I mean, I think we're responsible for protecting the money that the residents give us, right? It's our job to make sure, you know, I treat their money just like I treat my own money. I'd be doing the same thing. So if someone came to me and asked for 85 grand, I'd want to see some documents to do that. All of suggestions, we should do that. We should get something from them that says, here's what their current operating budget is, here's what they need, here's where the money's going to be spent, so we know we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. So that's it. Thanks. Bruce.
Thanks, Steve. Doug, did you have a comment?
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. So I think Joe's comment about the color printer is an excellent one. You know, not everybody is technologically advantaged in having that kind of equipment at their house, not to mention the fact that when it doesn't work and it's the night before a project's got to be done, where are you going to go? And the library is always a place that you want to depend on being able to get resources. So if they could add a color printer and support for that, it'd be great. To Joe's comment, too, about the, I think it was $500,000, I believe, and somebody can correct me, I believe that was never completed. I don't think that money ever ever changed hands. The request was withdrawn shortly after it was approved. And then I also want to address something just for the future and to have as a placeholder as we look at our Parks and Rec program. We have a proposal in the city budget, I believe it's for $75,000, to undertake a study for parks and facilities this coming year. And it was also the Arts Commission to have a community center and a venue. You look at the package attachment one, it's the second one from the bottom. It says, address the need for library services to Western Malibu, including participation and future planning for a community center. We know that the library fund has $19 million in it. It has expanded considerably over the last few years, and I think it would be a wonderful use of the funds to have a joint venture and employ some of these funds and employ the library into that that planning process. So let's don't forget the library is not only a funds are not only a place to pick up some cash to get the future development done, but also a place where we can expand the services to all of Malibu. That's my only comments on this. And by the way, as far as the $85,000 go, I think we had a presentation on that at the TUP that talked about what the money would be used for. They didn't give us the detail of what you were asking about, but they told us what they were going to use it for. Anyway, are we ready to make motions yet, or?
No, I have some comments, but Mary Ann, do you have any comments?
I was just going to say, you know, while I agree that a printer is very important, I think that the community should speak with the librarian at the local library and then also the schools to see what the need is for that before we move forward with buying or renting such an expensive piece of equipment. Make sure the need's actually there for that and work with the actual staff to determine the need for those types of things.
Okay, so I just have a few comments. First of all, just so everyone understands, I think this is in the report, but if it's not, you know, we we say all the time that all of the property taxes that are collected in Malibu, which are substantial, we only really keep to keep 7% of them after the county takes most of them and the state takes some and schools get some. But 2%, on top of that, seven, 2% goes to the library, and it goes to the library for for use in Malibu. And that's what this fund is all about. It's the amount that's not spent for the Malibu library that is paid each year by that 2% of our property taxes, and it accumulates substantially because the cost of running the Malibu library is substantially less than the 2% property taxes that are contributed each year towards that. And, you know, we we're thankful to the prior city council for negotiating that that deal where the county had to stop using that money throughout the throughout the county and had to allocate it specifically to Malibu. And it's now grown to 19 million. It's going to continue to grow. It's going to it grows by leaps and bounds. And I'm really happy that this year we did make sure that the money was being spent, that the proposals for money to be spent are going to be spent exclusively in Malibu for Malibu residents and for the public in general that comes to Malibu. So that's those are good things. There to Joe's comment about what are we going to do about money that was contributed by the county through our fund to general county expenses? Steve and I had proposed last year that we request a refund of certain monies, and Doug's right, the 500,000 was never spent, but there was about a million or more that was spent before that on countywide matters, despite the MOU that says they couldn't. But the city council voted three to two not to do anything about that. So unless somebody brings that back, that's where that stands. I think the color printer issue is micromanaging. That's up to the library to decide what the library needs, and there's a hundred and something thousand dollar reserve in the proposed budget from which they could draw that if they decided that that was inappropriate expenditure. The Film Society, to be clear, we did not approve giving the Film Society money. We approved reimbursing the Film Society for the cost of providing free membership to Malibu residents as those costs are incurred. So although we were given financial information about what they expected they were going to need, they're going to have to account for what they need as it is incurred. So this is not a situation where we're just handing money over to somebody. And moreover, we're not loaning it to anybody. We're using that money to pay for educational and entertainment value to the residents of our city. So I think and and we already voted to incur that cost. This is only a question of whether we can ask the county to incur the cost for us since it has a tie-in to the library. Last point I'll make is we did discuss at the committee meeting, Mary Ann and I, that along the lines of what Doug just said, we've got $19 million. We're going to have 20 million, we're going to have 25 million in a few years, maybe less than a few years. We really should be looking into some grand use of that that is libraries specific. So whether it's building another branch, whether it's tearing down the branch that exists and building a more modern facility that includes community space, better community space, because modern libraries are not just about books, they're about meeting places, they're about they're about showing films. We ought to be looking into what we can do on a grand scale with with this money, because it's our money. And under the MOU, if we don't spend it after a certain amount of years, we still have many years left, it reverts to the county. So we really should be looking into some large, grand-scale plan that will help our residents and will spend our tax dollars in Malibu to benefit our residents. Steve, were you going to say something?
No.
Okay, or Paul? Okay.
I think Steve McClair is the one.
Oh, Steve, I saw someone over there. It was so much easier on Zoom, you could see exactly who was raising their hand. Go ahead, Steve McClair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to note for the council that we do need to bring back as a formality or actually for formal action, the the grant to the Film Society. So that will be coming back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Per your direction.
And there are, I understand there's some speed bumps there after we gave the approvals that we gave, so it's unclear whether that's going to happen anytime in the foreseeable future. Paul?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use of set-aside funds for the Malibu library for fiscal year 2023-2024.
So I second.
I'll second.
Anybody have any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protimurin?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, great. We're up to we're back to item 4A, fiscal year 202324 wastewater service charges. Again, please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item, and you'll be called after the staff report. And we do not have any speaker cards, so there are no in-person people who will speak after the staff report. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're having a public hearing to place the annual wastewater service charges for those properties connected to the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility. Most of those properties are in Phase One in the commercial area. This this allows the city to collect those wastewater service charges and have a mechanism for enforcement. Typically, other cities, they bill out wastewater service charges, and for non-payment, they're able to turn off water to those services and then have have those customers be able to pay those fines or pay those charges and have their water back turned back on. But city doesn't have that luxury. We don't own and operate the water water system here. So this is a mechanism how we can collect the wastewater service charges from those properties and have a mechanism for enforcement. Once again, tonight, I have Brandy Ayala here to give us the numbers. She's going to go over the numbers of what the total wastewater service charges and what that looks like for each property. So Brandy.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members. This year for the next fiscal year, we have a total budget of $2,308,98. This is a this is a rate of $506.44 for the next fiscal year. This is less than the previous fiscal year. We had a handful of properties connect that will be charged for the upcoming fiscal year. One of those properties was La Paz, so it helped drive down that rate.
And with that, we recommend that you adopt a resolution so we could post this on the upcoming property taxes and collect start collecting those funds and available for questions.
Okay, do we have any public speakers?
No, we don't have any speaker slips or any raised hands in Zoom.
Okay, public comment is closed. Brings us back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just have one quick question. I noticed on the wastewater recycled water, is that being used? What's what's the story on that? Because it's advantageous as far as price goes, and I guess you have to inject it if you don't don't find a buyer for it.
Yes, right now, the city is using a large amount of that recycled water for the Blues Park and using that. Yes, it is a good cost and good incentive for those property owners to actually use recycled. It's not mandatory, but it's it's a good price for use recycled water for irrigation. There is a set amount that we do have to use on a daily basis to to inject into our injection wells on Malibu Road, and that's done just to keep the injection wells operating properly without being clogged up and fouled up. If that happens, then it's going to be quite expensive.
Steve?
Yeah, just real quick. At one point in time, I remember we had as part of a discussion that you were also going to have to put in some reserve funds for future. That's that's not done yet, is that correct?
Yeah, so this rate study ends with this year. Next year, that we'll be doing a new wastewater service rate, and we will include more funds for a reserve amount for capital. For the first, I don't know, five years or so, a need for a reserve amount for our brand-new facility wasn't really kind of warranted. And so but but now this next phase, we're going to go, it could use some some funds to do that, so we'll, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protimurin?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving right along, we'll now hear item 5A, hybrid meetings. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item, and you'll be called after the staff report. And once again, I have no speaker cards. Can we have a staff report, please?
Just give me one moment to get the PowerPoint up. Good evening, mayor and honorable members of the city council. As you know, on March 27th, we launched the Hybrid Meeting Pilot Program, which allows members of the public to participate in your meetings in person or remotely. Tonight, I will briefly review how meetings have been operating under the pilot program and ask for further direction on how the city council and commission meetings should be conducted in the future. Hybrid meetings thus far have been conducted under AB 361, allowing members of the public and the council to participate remotely. AB 361 terminates on January 1st, 2024, but it does require the council to make certain findings related to the ongoing emergency every 30 days. Although the pandemic is ongoing, LA County health statistics have improved, and the state's COVID-19 state of emergency and the Los Angeles County Local Health Officer order have have been terminated. As part of the hybrid discussion, the council should consider when it would be appropriate to stop making AB 361 findings. Under the pilot program, we made some changes to how meetings are conducted to accommodate the hybrid format with minimal disruptions and technical difficulties. Using Zoom webinar in place of Zoom meetings has given staff better permission controls for staff, council members, and members of the public participating remotely. And as a recap of the decisions made regarding public comment, we did create separate speaker sign-up procedures for in-person and remote speakers, and this helps us identify the speakers in the chambers or on Zoom and unmute the correct Zoom speaker. To streamline things with all of the new processes, the council elected not to allow time deferrals during hybrid meetings. If the council did want to change this in the future, it does pose technical challenges for remote speakers, but it could be accommodated for in-person speakers if that's your preference. And finally, we have the Zoom speakers on audio only piped into the council chambers. If the council would like to continue hybrid meetings in the current format, staff will issue an RFP for a long-term contract to support the media team with the additional staffing needed for hybrid meetings. Also, looking to the future, the council should consider how it will address council members teleconferencing after it eventually stops making AB 361 findings. The Brown Act's general teleconference provisions will still be in effect, allowing council members to teleconference from a notice location open to the public. And if the council does continue holding hybrid meetings, which allow the public to participate remotely, the council could also use AB 2449's alternate teleconference provisions, which allow council members to teleconference from a private location for just cause or in emergency circumstances. This is a new regulation with some onerous requirements, including council approval to teleconference during emergency circumstances, and it limits how often council members can use these teleconference provisions. If the council would like to use these teleconference provisions in the future, we would likely need to bring back a teleconference policy to guide implementation. And if the council did return to exclusively in-person meetings, only the general teleconference provisions would be available. AB 2449 only applies to cities holding hybrid meetings. Your commission meetings have continued virtually while this council launched the Hybrid Meeting Pilot Program. Now that we have worked out the kinks of hybrid meetings, staff recommends you direct the Planning Commission to begin meeting in the same format as you are with the same protocols as the city council. Many Planning Commission public hearings do require a 21-day notice, so the first meeting that could be held in person or hybrid without requiring re-noticing would be their July 17th, 2023 meeting. They are also dark, their first meeting in July. And we are also recommending the council identify a date to direct all other commissions to return to in-person meetings. In conclusion, we're looking for a direction on how you would like to continue your meetings in the future, and if you've been happy with the hybrid pilot program, and direction on how the commission should conduct their meetings. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Okay, great. Do we have any Zoom speakers?
We have two raised hands. First, I'll go from Ryan.
Yes, I would like to recommend that the city continue with hybrid meetings because it engages the community, and Malibu is like the only city in LA County where you could drive the speed limit for almost a half an hour and still be in the same city. It is a major issue for a lot of the residents of the city who are retired and older, and I think it's a And I think it's a convenience and a normal form of government function these days. We were promised remote testimony at council meetings and hearings long before COVID as one of the justifications to buy a whole bunch of new teleconferencing equipment, the high-definition cameras, so that, you know, everybody could see all the wrinkles in our faces for these meetings. And so this is, is not a, a new thing because of COVID that needs to be sunsetted. This is a thing that needs to continue in general. We need to kind of get with technology and use it for maximum transparency in government and public participation with decision-making, which is one of the council's enduring policies. And I would support continuation of remote access hybrid to all City Council meetings indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we hear from Joe Drummond.
Hello again. I agree with everything Ryan said. I'm actually out of town today, so that's how I'm tuning in today. The one thing I do mention is Planning Commission does allow adding minutes, donated minutes. So if you are going to have them move to this hybrid form, I would suggest that City Council do the same so that we can continue that because there's always a lot of pro and against in, in, in projects. So it would be good to have all kinds of participation that way. And I think that's it, but thanks so much. I appreciate the hybrid meeting tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Does that conclude public comment?
Yes, that concludes public comment.
Okay, so, so a loophole apparently in the process also is that if you don't submit a speaker card, you can go outside and hook in on Zoom. The cameras don't show up, but Ryan is back in the room. Okay, are there any comments or questions at the council level?
I've got a question to the city attorney. I thought there were some bills in process to stream on this and take into consideration some of the success stories. Anything going on?
Well, all the, the bills that were favorable, that were supported by CalCities failed. 2249 is the closest, you know, option that went through. So if you stop making the AB 361 findings, it does provide a limited ability for a council member or commissioner to appear remotely. There are specific circumstances when that is and there are requirements for how the council member or commissioner does participate via Zoom. But other than making those findings or otherwise posting as a, as, under the Brown, under the Brown Act's general remote teleconferencing provisions, if you stop making the AB 361 findings, those would be your limitations of either posting your location or under AB 2249. There are some other provisions that are being considered. They are not anywhere near coming through at this point in time, but, you know, the state legislature did authorize themselves to continue to participate remotely.
Is there any question about allowing the public to continue to participate remotely under any of these laws? Or is that a permissible thing no matter what?
If you stop making the AB 361 findings, you can still have the, the, the community participate remotely.
Okay.
It just applies to whether the council members and commissioners themselves can appear remotely.
Okay.
You, in order to do hybrid, otherwise, you just need to make the provisions and the technology available to do it.
So there's nothing in the law that will stop us from continuing to allow members of the public to participate by Zoom? If we choose to do so?
If you stop making the AB 361 findings, yes.
Okay. I have some questions and comments. Anyone else first?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I would just make a comment that I've talked to my commissioners and they all like the way we're doing things now. The idea of not having to come to a central meeting spot is favorable to several people that have out-of-town business and so forth. It's a real advantage. And I don't know what the best answer is in this. I personally feel like the Planning Commission does need to be in the same format we are. This is semi-judicial operation. But the other commissions may be able to function just as well in a Zoom world. But, and I know that takes a lot of, a lot of pressure off the staff if they don't have to have in-person meetings everywhere. So just my comments.
Steve?
Yeah, I would agree. I think the Planning Commission in-person meetings in the format we're, we're using, I think it'd be good for them. And I think that the Zoom thing works because you've got a lot of the architects or the planners who live out of town. So being able to do it via Zoom, I think, gives them a chance to communicate. I like, I like the format we're using here. The only thing, you know, and I, and I know you say it's difficult to do, so I'm not saying we got to do that. But boy, being able to see the part, the Zoom people's face when they're communicating with us, I just think that gives another little, gives me a, a better ability to sort of see them, see what they're saying, get some sense of how sincere they are and what they're doing. So, you know, I'd like to have it happen if we could. I'm not concerned about donating time. I mean, I think the process we get going on is working pretty well. And so, you know, get the, get the Planning Commission on board and I think that's a good step to take. So that's it. Thank you.
I'll go unless somebody else wants to. Kelsey?
I just wanted to clarify, Mayor, regarding the commissions meeting virtually, that that is only permissible under AB 361 and that law is still in effect. But at some point, the council will have to decide if it's still appropriate to make AB 361 findings. And then the council, the commissions will need to return to at least some form of in-person meeting.
Maria?
I was just going to ask about the, the visual aspect. If we did, if somebody was seen, do we have the ability to cut off anything offensive? If it's, becomes an issue? I know, when I was reviewing the minutes from, or the, the meeting from April 11th, there were several colorful words that were used. And, you know, they weren't muted or anything else like that. So I just want to make sure if we do have anybody post anything offensive, would we be able to turn their camera off?
So the challenges with showing video from the public, there's twofold. There is the technical challenge that the city does not currently have a way to do picture-in-picture display, which at times would be necessary to show the public and to show whatever, you know, other graphics we would have on your screen, such as right now or during a PowerPoint. That is one that can be overcome and invested in. It will just change how your meetings are displayed. The question you bring up is, in some ways, an even greater concern because we do have the ability to turn off someone's ability to share video, but it puts staff in the position of having to police that. And we're going to need very clear guidance from the council about what our parameters are for that. And we will have to do it live. And we can't really go back and change. If it's shown on the meeting, it's shown on the meeting. You know, we can only stop it, we can't go back.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Paul?
One of the problems with, with allowing the public to present live is they really, they really, if, if we shut off their mic and shut off their video, then those who are being obnoxious in the hopes that they can get a lawsuit going for not being heard, we've just given them a leg up. So I think we're better off continuing to not show them.
All right, so first of all, the AB 36, we, we recite this time and time again in our declaration, in our resolutions. AB 361 authorizes legislative bodies to continue meeting virtually if specified conditions are met. These conditions include when state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. Trevor, are state and local officials continuing to recommend measures to promote social distancing?
The, I believe we're down to, there is a recommendation from OSHA about social distancing. And that is the, the primary authority that we're relying on at this point in time. The local, the local order is now expired.
Okay. Local order has expired?
It's a local health authority order.
Is there a recommendation from local health?
I don't believe we have a recommendation on social distancing from them. I think there is a, a recommendation from the National Institutes of Health, but the AB 361 says state or local authorities. So OSHA is the primary recommender on the social distancing.
So it, it seems to me, whether we want, whether we want to make these findings or not, we certainly have the ability, unless and until OSHA ceases to make that recommendation, to make that required finding. And that's the only finding we are required to make. So we, we can continue to authorize this. The only question then is, should we? I, I think that the meetings we've been having are, are, and so I'm going to back up and say, first of all, you know, COVID's still with us. I contracted COVID after close to three years of avoiding it, just a few weeks ago. It's not fun. It's not the, it's not like it was three years ago. We have other staff members who've contracted it since we've started gathering again. So it's not like we're not taking some risk. Before we were to, if we don't make these findings, that means our commissioners are going to all have to start meeting in person again. And yes, they're doing that in many other places, if not most other places, but that doesn't mean we have to make them do it. Before I'm going to vote on imposing that on them, I'd want to hear from them. I'd, I'd want to give them, I'd want to put it on the agenda that we want to hear from the commissioners and, and get their, their input. I would like, I've been saying this, I would like to see time deferrals for the in-person people. I don't see how that creates any issue. That's what we did forever here and we should be able to continue to do that for here. I don't have any problem with discriminating against people on Zoom not being able to do that because I think there's a reasonable justification for that and it's, it's not an improper distinction. I would like to see the people on Zoom. And there's, someone can stand up here and say whatever they want, any obscenities that they want, and could even stripper what have you, and we wouldn't be able to stop them until after it has occurred. On Zoom, you can shut them off much more easily. You just turn the button. So I, I don't understand what the technical difficulty is. I, I would like to see us, see the people who are making inputs. It's, it's sitting here watching the screen with the, with just the microphone and hearing a voice is kind of really, it's, it's surreal. So that's it, that's all my comments. My, my thought is I would like to see the commissioners eventually coming back, but I'd like to hear from them first. I don't see any reason in the world why we would stop people from being able to participate by Zoom if that's what their preference is. And there's going to come a time when we're not going to be allowed to make the hybrid determination.
Mayor, do you want to hold off on the Planning Commission until they come for you? Or you want to move forward with that one?
Well, we're just making suggestions at this point. It's not, it's not agendized to actually make a vote to require anything at this point?
I believe the AB 361 findings have already been taken care of. This is to provide direction so that if you do want to terminate it, we can plan it out because we set public hearings and the notices are provided for Zoom or in-person and we would need to adjust that. So we need some lead time for when you do want to make a change.
So does, does anybody here want to put on a future agenda the question of whether to stop making the findings so that the commissions are required to appear in person? Or are we all, or are we content to continue to make the finding to permit that to occur? Paul?
We've already made the 361 finding today. And the state of California passed something that basically gave us that option through the end of this year. So I think that it's going that way anyway. I think that probably it'd be interesting to ask the commissioners what they want to do. But I think that, I think that the applicants are very much in favor of actually going to the Planning Commission in front of live people.
And we're going to, unless the law changes, they're going to have to come back live at the end of the year or the beginning of next year.
Correct.
Well, I don't think we should delay any longer from the Planning Commission being back in person. I think that's an important thing. And I think our community deserves them to be back in person. So I would like to see them back at the first available date that they can be.
So you want to put on the agenda for the next meeting, a decision as to whether to require the Planning Commission to have in-person meetings? Because we can't do it right now.
I, Kelsey may have some or.
Trevor will correct me if I'm wrong, but the recommended action did include providing direction on the meeting format for a commission committee and board meeting. So that should provide sufficient notice if you'd like to provide new direction to the Planning Commission.
If, if you say to do it as soon as possible, then the staff will make the, the change that any new public hearings will be noticed for in-person. I don't know what date exactly that would fall on, but if you give that direction, staff will take care of, of, of making those notices. And then we'll stop bringing the AB 361 findings if you make that direction.
So my direction would be that we resume in-person meetings at the first available date for noticing period.
For all commission, for all?
Definitely Planning Commission. So if, if I can't persuade others to do all the commissions, at least Planning Commission, let's get it back in person. I think they, they need to be back in person ASAP.
And just Kelsey, Planning Commission may be a little trickier than the City Council because you could have an applicant live, okay? And they could have their architect calling in from Orange County someplace on Zoom. So maybe bouncing back and forth a lot. So just, you'll figure that out, but it's going to be a little trickier, I think.
That is something we're aware of and prepared for. The planning staff works pretty closely with their applicants to know what, what they're going to do at a hearing and who needs to be available to present. And I just want to clarify that you'd be directing your Planning Commission to begin hybrid meetings under AB 361 in the same manner that you're conducting your meetings. So they would run in, in parallel again.
To, to, to clarify, it will be then a recommendation from the council. Unless you stop making those findings, you can't require those commissioners to appear in person. They would still have the right to appear remotely for making the AB 361 findings.
If we stop making the findings though, then every commission will be required to resume in-person meetings. And, and as it is right now, we're not required to be here, correct?
That's correct. That's why I believe some of you actually have appeared remotely pursuant to AB 361 in the last couple of months.
I think that was when somebody was ill, not. Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, I, again, I, I don't favor enforcing, imposing on anyone the possibility of getting COVID. So I'm not prepared to, to support that until we hear from the five commissioners what they think. I mean, we did receive a letter from Craig opposing it. But if it's four to one, then, you know, it'll have to be, Craig will just have to come. But I would like to know what the five Planning Commissioners want to do. Paul?
Bruce, I think you made a point just a moment ago that we can, we can, if we, if we ask them to do it, we're recommending it. And if, if one of them wants to attend remotely and that offends us in some way, then we can, you know, we can stop doing the 361s. So I, I think that requesting it is the, is a genteel way to handle it. And we'll see what happens.
So is that the proposed motion then to, to recommend that the Planning Commission resume in-person?
Well, I, I don't want to presume that based on silence. Let's find out what each person has to say on that question.
So is it possible for we, we can have Planning Commission come back in the, the hybrid format and the remaining commissions could still stay on?
Zoom.
Zoom? And we would just be making the 361 findings indefinitely until we ask them to return also?
Yes, so the option, if you want to keep the option for the other commissions to, to meet remotely, then you would make the AB 361 findings. But you are requesting the Planning Commission to appear in person, the same as the City Council. The same as you have requested each other do, I'll, I'll show up in person. You're not all required to, but you, you have. You can make that same recommendation to the Planning Commission.
I thought the mayor wanted to have them, wanted to talk to the Planning Commission first.
Well.
Well, I mean, I've spoken with my Planning Commissioner and he let me know how he feels. So everyone can vote based upon their own recommendation. But I'm going to make a motion to recommend that the Planning Commission comes back in a hybrid format similar to the City Council and the remaining commissions stay on Zoom for the time being.
Okay, and we know Paul supports that. Just, just, let's just get a straw vote before we do.
I support it too, but I think the date that starts the Planning Commission.
Your microphone.
I support it as well, but I think we need to know a date that's workable with the staff as to when they could start that. And I'm thinking it's not going to be 21 days from now.
We could do that as soon as the second meeting in July, the July 17th meeting of the Planning Commission. We have sufficient time to notice.
All right, well, any further comments? Because we can take a vote.
Anybody second my question?
I'll second it for July 7th, July 17th, right?
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment, Maria?
Yes, I do.
All right, so the, the motion is to direct staff at the, as of the second meeting in July to request that the commissioners on the Planning Commission show up in person, even though we can't require them to. And then we'll take it from there if they don't.
To clarify, the staff will then, they'll To clarify, staff will then... There'll be an in-person planning commission meeting so that people can show up. So it'll be noticed both for in-person and for remote.
And is part of the motion that we're not making that request of the others, or we're just silent on that for now?
It was part of my motion that the remaining commissions be looked at in the future.
Paul, did you second it?
I... Yes.
Doug, you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Protimurian?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Sure.
Motion carries. And Mayor, if I could just ask a few clarifying questions before you move off the office item entirely. So just to clarify, the council would like to continue its hybrid meetings as they have been conducted. I haven't heard that the entire body is looking for any changes, but if you would like changes, now is an appropriate time to give that direction.
Well, is there any further support besides for Steve and me for letting people appear on camera? Doesn't look like it.
It might be... Just think about what we'd have to do to do that, okay? I mean, we're not going to get the motion tonight, I think. But down the line, I do think that is the more appropriate way to hold the meetings. So just keep it on your radar screen if we go there, what you guys would have to do to make that work. Is that...
Is there any support for allowing in-person attendees to defer their time?
I think that was stated already, wasn't it?
No. Right now, we're not allowing that.
Oh.
You could allow it for in-person speakers. We can accommodate that if that's how the council would prefer the meeting to flow and be conducted. I've just only heard it from one council member and wanted direction from the body.
Oh.
And that would be applied to planning commission also? Or do we need to...
Yes, if you're directing them to conduct their meetings in the same manner as you are.
Then yes, I would recommend that we do time deferrals to in-person attendees only.
Anyone else in favor of that?
I'm in favor of that.
I'm in favor.
All right. Do we need to formally vote on it, or could we just make that a direction?
If we could have a motion for the record, that would be helpful.
I'll move that we revise the hybrid procedures to allow in-person attendees to defer up to one minute of time, limited to an additional five minutes to a single speaker.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protimurian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, may I request a five-minute break?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let's take a two-hour break.
No.
Just a joke, Norm.
Mr. Mayor, what time?
Five minutes. Make it a 10-minute break. Okay, now the item everybody's been waiting for, 5B. We will now hear Seaview Hotel Project. Actually, it's Local Coastal Program Amendment Number 16006. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item, and you'll be called after the in-person speakers. Can we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. What I have before you this evening is, as requested at your last hearing, the Seaview Hotel Local Coastal Program Amendment. This is just a brief history of the project for this year since the Coastal Commission took action on this item. On February 8th, 2023, the Coastal Commission adopted a modified version of the Local Coastal Program Amendment. The LCPA was presented to this council on April 24th of this year. At that time, the council considered it and took no action, and they requested that the applicant work with the Coastal Commission to address the concern of how the in-lu fees that were going to be granted to the Coastal Commission were to be used by MRCA. On May 22nd of this year, the council made a motion to bring back this item and receive an update, and also would provide the council with an opportunity to provide additional direction. On June 9th, the MRCA had an item on their agenda to address the spending of the anticipated in-lu mitigation fees for the project. Just in a nutshell, it was a resolution that was passed with a note about not using the funds for development of campsites within the Ramires Canyon area, but the money would go to improving lower-cost visitor-serving amenities. What staff seeks this evening from the council is direction on how to move forward with this. The council's options are to vote to accept the modified LCPA. If that is the council's direction this evening, staff will notice an item to bring back a ordinance for first reading for this council. Or the council could choose to deny the Local Coastal Program Amendment as modified, and that could be done in one of two ways, with either a resolution for staff to withdraw the LCPA from the Coastal Commission, or simply to let the six-month expiration date come and go. And that would be August 8th of this year. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I have a question. You said that the reason it was deferred was to determine how fees to be paid to the Coastal Commission were to be used by the MRCA. Is it not... There was never a request to find out how they were to be used by the MRCA. Was there... Was to find out how they were to be used, period? There was no presumption that they'd be used by the MRCA, isn't that right?
I apologize. I'm looking for the action. The action we took at that meeting was that the council took no action other than to direct staff to work with the applicant and the California Coastal Commission to see if action could be taken that would potentially make the LCPA acceptable to the council.
Right. So it wasn't to find out how they'd be used by the MRCA?
No, I apologize.
Okay.
Didn't mean to say that.
Are there any other questions from council before we go to public comment? Public comment. So the first speaker is Fred Gaines, followed by Norm Haney.
I'm not full for him.
No, you're first. You're first on the list.
I'm just available to answer questions.
Okay. So Fred's available to answer questions. Norm?
Honorable council members, it's been a long eight years, but I'm finally before you with respect to the Local Coastal Program Amendment. And on April 24th, I agree with the staff said, the primary concern of the city council was how the $800,000 that was directed to the MRCA by the Coastal Commission, how that money was going to be used. And the primary concern that I have understood was that the money would be used for campsites in the Ramires Canyon area. And that was a nonstarter for many people, including the people that live in Ramires Canyon. So basically, I've been working with the MRCA, as I said at the last meeting, and the negotiations... And the negotiations continued. And they came to a head on Friday when they took a vote, and when I say they, I'm talking about the MRCA, took a vote unanimously approving that they would not use the $800,000 that was, the Coastal Commission directed me to transfer to the MRCA. They would not use it for development of campsites in the Ramiras Canyon. It specifically states that. And, but they will use it for low-cost visitor-serving amenities. Now amenities means a lot of things. Can be repairing gates so they can be closed at sundown. Can be preparing trails, making sure that the porta-potties are managed properly and so on and so forth. So I'm asking the City Council, by the way, anybody that's worked with the MRCA and the California Coastal Commission knows to get them to agree not to use the money on campsites in a specific area is quite an accomplishment. So I'm, I'm basically asking the staff to prepare an ordinance, requesting the City Council to request the staff prepare an ordinance to accept the modified LCPA as stated in their staff report as item number two.
No, Norm, thank you very much. You have three minutes. This is not a vote on your project, this is a vote on an LCPA. Thank you. Robert Gold, followed by Jefferson Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robert Gold. I, sorry, I'm here tonight to respectfully request that this council direct planning department to prepare an ordinance accepting the Sea View Hotel LCPA with the suggested modifications approved by the Coastal Commission and for it to be brought back to this council as soon as possible for hearing. As you know, Coastal modified the LCPA by requiring the applicant to pay an additional $800,000 fee, which Coastal's executive director can use to give another entity for its use in developing lower-cost, lower, lower-cost visitor-serving accommodations consistent with one of Coastal's primary purposes, to maximize public access and recreation in the coastal zone. Members of this council have expressed two concerns about the suggested modifications. First, the executive director may give the $800,000 to the MRCA to create campsites in Ramiras Canyons, which could pose a fire danger to the residents of this city. Mr. Haney has discussed this issue with the MRCA and as he's reported, the board has agreed that it will not do so. Well done, Norm, that is a hard accomplishment. Second, Coastal may not have given the city an opportunity to receive the $800,000 so it could create such accommodations. Respectfully, whether this city was given an opportunity by Coastal to receive the money is not material because to my knowledge, the city neither has properties on which it can create such accommodations nor plans to create parcels on which such accommodations could be located. I'm not making a judgment on whether this is good or a bad thing. I'm just stating, I know for firsthand, because when I was entitled to Crummert property, starting in 2008, Coastal wanted us to pay an in-lu fee to create such accommodations. However, however, there was no such location to do so and the closest opportunity was the DePanga Ranch Motel. We worked with State Parks and Coastal for over six years, but on the eve of our hearing at Coastal, negotiations between Coastal and State Parks broke down and our $4 million in-lu fee went to the MRCA. For the record, I do not have any financial interest in this project. However, I believe it would be inequitable for the Sea View Hotel LCPA, previously approved by this council, to now be denied. Such a result would deny Mr. Haney the benefits of nearly a decade of hard work and compromise, deny a project that had been approved by, on its merits by this council and deny substantial benefits to the city, including tens of millions of dollars of TOT that could be used to hire sheriffs, purchase emergency responding, preparedness technology or needed staff, to just name a few things. Thank you for your time and consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert. Jefferson, followed by John Payne.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time and effort on behalf of your community. And the deep look that you have given this project is in good respect from all of this, all of us that are watching because you have determined deep down inside of your souls how to protect your community, especially Ramiras Canyon. I have a property that burned in the fire right up at Escondido and now I, my personal properties are in suspect of Joe's new trails, which you addressed earlier this evening. I've contacted Barry Haldeman on a couple of occasions to reflect upon Joe Edmiston's behavior and characteristics of acquiring property and not having the capabilities to maintain those properties. Part of the frustrations of many people in Malibu, including when I was on council two times, were the fact that they couldn't get fair administration of the properties he's acquired. You've heard that time and time again. Once again, here we have another situation. You're going to have to determine sometime in the next few weeks how that would work. I was given information that the money that Norm had contributed in the 800 to a million dollar range, I could be corrected, was to be used by MRCA for a dedicated ranger for seven years in the Malibu area, which would handle a lot of the efforts that are necessary now, which are not being completed by the tasking of the Rangers Department of the MRCA. That's a real thorn in a lot of people's backs here. So maybe I could be corrected, but if a ranger were hired with that money for that seven-year period, that would be a dedicated ranger to our zip code, which could not be denied, the money could not be used elsewhere. Thank you very much, council members, appreciate your time.
Thank you. John, you're up.
Honorable council members, my name is John Payne. My wife and I have been a resident in Serra Retreat for many, many years, our children were raised here. I support this hotel project for the following reasons. The hotel is 65% completed. It has parking. It provides revenue to the city of Malibu when completed. I hope that you will help it, you'll support it, and it becomes a reality in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll go to Zoom. We have one raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Hi there. I just wanted to say that regardless of how I feel about the development and, and what the hotel will bring to Malibu, I do think that Norm Haney has gone through the correct channels in getting a zoning change for the area and admitting he is building a hotel and not a motel and doing all the affordable housing payments that he's doing and the check valve and everything and making sure that the camp, the campgrounds aren't happening in Ramiras Canyon. I'm, I admire him for doing all of that, so I do just, I just wanted to say that regardless of how I feel about the hotel, I do also think he will satisfy some short-term rental needs, so that should satisfy a lot of Malibu people as well, so thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else with their hand raised? No, those are all the speakers. All right, that closes public comment. The last time we considered this item, we had a 4-1 divide. Paul was the supporter for approving this. I may have been, well, there were a lot of us that were vocal against it. I think I might have been the most vocal. What I'd like to do, if it's agreeable to the council, is have Paul first explain why he thinks we should reach a different decision this time. I'm going to explain why I'm still opposed to it and then we'll get all the other comments.
Well, I'm going to do something that a lot of people do, which is read from the vision and mission statement. But most people only read the first sentence. I'm going to read, I'm going to go all the way down and read the sixth sentence. And the sixth sentence is, "Malibu will gradually recycle areas of deteriorated commercial development that detract from the public benefit or deteriorate the public values of its natural, cultural and rural resources." And I think that this, this hotel is a great example of what was intended 31 years ago when those words were written. And I think that the, there is a large financial benefit to the city of Malibu that will happen every single year that, that building is operated. And I think that we will be able to do a lot of things that we cannot currently afford and maybe even some, build some things on the properties that we own like an art center or a sports center or our own pool. So I'm very much in favor of it. The bulk of the building is not going to change to somebody driving by on the street. What they're going to see is they won't see the old gas station anymore. They'll just see a driveway and a, and a good-looking entry. And I think it'll be a benefit to the city of Malibu and for those of us who've had people come to visit from out of town, it'll be a benefit to them as well. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. So there's no question that the project has much to be said in favor of it and things to be said against it. I mean, the council voted 4 to 1 a year or two, a year or so ago to approve it. The Coastal Commission made some changes, which is what caused the project to potentially fail after that. I'm disappointed by what has occurred since our hearing because I think we made it very clear that the issue wasn't the specific way that the MRCA was intending to spend the money that was the issue. The issue was that the money, the money for low-cost accommodation was not being given to Malibu to decide what, what is the appropriate use or at least alternatively to give Malibu a veto over how it was going to be used. And I, I, I think it's disingenuous to claim that there was an understanding that this would satisfy the City Council. Maybe I'll be surprised to learn that this does satisfy the City Council. It doesn't come close to satisfying me because I don't think the applicant did what we directed. In fact, the applicant was directed, I think the words were read explicitly, to work with the Coastal Commission to change the arrangement. And what we came back with and being told this is what we asked for was an arrangement with MRCA. As Doug knows full well, and I think everyone knows because it's pretty, it's pretty commonsensical, money is fungible. So it really doesn't make a difference whether you give the MRCA $800,000 to build camping in Ramiras Canyon or you give them $800,000 that they otherwise would have to spend on some other, some other project because they then have $800,000 more that they can spend on Ramiras Canyon because they haven't spent it elsewhere. This also is not a commitment not to use it on Bus Park. If I were their lawyer, I'd, I'd be saying, wow, this is great, I pulled a fast one on them. I agreed not to use it in Ramiras Canyon, but I can use it right in the center of the city where the, the city's even more opposed to it. So I don't think this is a, I don't think this great deal has accomplished anything whatsoever since we were here last time. So again, I'll, maybe I'll be surprised, but I don't think this has done anything that four members of this council said needed to be done to make this satisfactory. There are other problems that I identified previously, they weren't the ones that were the reason for the 4 to 1 vote, but there also are changes that were made here to the parking provisions, which the council spent a lot of time dealing with, which loosened them and nobody's been talking about that. The benefits of the project that a lot of people talk about, I, I think they're illusory and mythical because this project's not going to be done in the foreseeable future. It's, it's a spec project. This is all that we're being asked to do is approve this so that there will be a bunch of entitlements put on the property. Nothing's going to happen. It's not going to get developed, it's not going to get developed anytime soon. I'll be shocked if we receive any of these tremendous benefits that we're being told we're going to get. Not only that, we still have not seen financial statements that shows that there are, in fact, the benefits that we've been told we're going to get. So for those reasons, I can't, I mean, I was opposed to this, again, not on the merits, but I was opposed to it because I didn't think there was enough studies done in the first instance. I think there are going to be potential traffic problems. But that was a 4 to 1 vote then to go forward. Last time we were together, we had a 4 to 1 vote not to go forward because the MRCA was going to be the master of how this money gets spent, not the city of Malibu. The MRCA is still going to be the master of how this money gets spent with the one exception that they can't spend it specifically on Ramiras. But if they get the money, they can spend it on buffs, they can spend it on anything else. And I don't think rangers, by the way, are low cost, low cost, low-cost accommodations. It's great to have ranger, but that's not a low-cost accommodation, that's not what the statute's about. That's not what we're trying to accomplish. So Doug Marianne or Steve, who wants to go next?
Everybody's in a hurry here to talk. This project, as, as Paul mentioned, fits right in with the mission statement about recycling the old buildings. And it's an issue the city has got to address. You look at how office buildings and retail space are being turned into bad assets today right before our very eyes. It's around the country, you see vacancies running rampant right and left. Well, here's a repurposing fits right down the line of what you do with a, a office building that can't be used as an office building anymore. It's going to be a hotel. And I think the Planning Commission, I think they approved this 5-0. Numerous times they've been through it. The City Council, as, as the mayor mentioned, when it came before them, before it was 4-1 in favor. But what I think pushes backwards on this project last time around were the changes that the Coastal Commission made. And I think I was the one that read it into the minutes carefully, what, what was the approval? It was the Coastal Commission approved that the director would make a decision about where the money was spent. And as Mr. Gold mentioned, when we had a $4 million window of money, we didn't know what to do with it and we lost it. And the city is not prepared, unfortunately, at this very moment to say, this is a project we could use $800,000 for. And it makes it very difficult to ask somebody to give you $800,000 and we'll see what we can do over the next few years. I wish we had those projects in place, I think that's something we've got to fix because we have other projects that will eventually come down the line and will put money in somebody's pocket. And I think the Coastal Commission has established a new number, I think it was $110,000 per unit to go toward low-cost accommodations. And that's something that we ought to look at, it's, it's our money, it should be under our control. The mayor is correct. It should be our pockets, our veto, our projects, our city that does this. But that's not what's on the table right now. And I know my choke point on this was MRCA being in Ramiras Canyon, which is the wrong place to be doing their camping. And I think it was unfortunate that that was included in this package for approval because it was a setback and it really was a, a terrible precedent to allow our money to go into a project that had so much danger to our city and our citizens. So honestly, I'm in favor of what we have here tonight. It's a change that I requested to take the Ramiras Canyon project off the table. How we got to it is not necessarily the way I would have liked to have done it, but the outcome is what we want. And when we get everybody's voice on this, I'll be glad to make a motion for approval. And I could do it now, but let's, let's hear what everybody else has got to say.
Marianne?
Sorry. So we're to start on this. You know, I think that while I commend the norm for, you know, working to find some type of a solution that he believed was in the intentions of the city, I think that what we have instead is private parties working with MRCA to come up with a plan still that bypasses the city. And that's where I have the biggest issue with it. I've, you know, in the report here, it does include the ALI P section 1210 on new luxury overnight accommodations. And it says And it says that the city may approve new luxury overnight visitor accommodations if the evidence shows and the city finds the project provides a component of lower cost. Says that, "Through the payment of INLU fees to the city for deposit into a fund to subsidize the construction of lower-cost overnight facilities in the Malibu-Santa Monica Mountains Coastal Zone of Los Angeles or Ventura County." It doesn't say that we have to have a project in the can, ready to go, to do something. So, there's nothing within section 1210 that deals with the INLU fees, that we have to have a project ready. And I think that's really important, that it states, that, and you know, coastal wrote this document, and they stated that the money is supposed to come to the city, and the city is supposed to come up with the use of these funds. And, again, we're being cut out of any conversations whatsoever on how these money should be used, how they're calculated, to be generated, and what exactly the process is. And that's where I'm having the biggest issue and problem with this, is that we need to be at the table, and we need to be part of the decision. Now, I am, I know that there are some meetings scheduled with staff and coastal commission, so I am in favor of at least bringing an ordinance back at the next meeting, pending the outcome of those conversations. So at least we can give staff a little bit of time to talk with coastal, and see if there is something that is more acceptable to the council with regards to those INLU fees. So, you know, I guess I'm saying that we'll, we'll table this pending the resolution of conversations between city staff and coastal executive director and other staff.
Mary Ann, can I suggest a motion that would be that the staff bring back a resolution, provided that in advance of doing so, coastal commission has committed to allow Malibu to decide how to spend the money, or at least provide a veto to the city of Malibu? That it doesn't come back if that has not occurred in advance of the next meeting?
I, I mean, you can put forward that motion, I don't know that I could support that motion, though, so.
Well, if that's not what you're gonna, well, I'm gonna hold off for now, then. Steve?
Thank you. This has been a long journey. And here's, here is sort of what I think I know, or what I think I've learned, and I think I brought this up in the last meeting. When, sometime in December, early, middle of January, coastal commission came to the city, and had a meeting with staff, that said, you know, we're gonna require, the request is $800,000, and there was, and it was gonna be on the, the agenda for the coastal commission for February. Now, we never heard about that, I didn't, I didn't hear about that. Had we heard about it, we may have had an opportunity to go down to that February meeting, and argue for ourselves, that the city should be getting that money, and it shouldn't be going to the MRCA. It didn't happen. I'm not sure, had we made that argument, we would've changed the outcome of the events, but we would've had a chance to do that. I know that Norm talked to the coastal commission, and Norm, if I'm wrong in this, you let me know, okay? That originally, and it may have been a plan that Joe said okay to, that, you know, we could use the money to hire rangers, alright, to deal with some of the issues that we currently have regarding opening and closing the gates, and you know, policing the area, making sure we've got, you know, bodies there, or whatever. And it wasn't the MRCA, it was the coastal commission who said no. Coastal commission said, no, you're gonna use that money for low-income housing, we're not gonna use it for rangers. The coastal commission does not like us. Yeah, I mean, I, I wish, I wish there was a better way to say that, but, you know, I had this conversation with some, some friends of mine the other day, that said, saying, over time, you know, we have done things that have created this animus between us and those guys. You know, whether it was, you know, residents who were painting the curb sides red to keep people from going to the beach, and in addition to that, every meeting, or not every meeting, but you know, the meetings that I've had an opportunity to look at, Joe Edmison shows up with his story of what he was able to accomplish in terms of opening up access to the beach, and, and the coastal commissioners love him. I mean, he, you know, he dumps on Malibu, says, here's all the stupid stuff we're doing, here's all the good stuff I'm doing, and the coastal commissioners think he's the greatest thing since vanilla ice cream. So, where am I going with this? I think the hotel is a good idea. And it's back to what the vision and mission statement says, you know, we are going back and taking buildings that exist out there, and we're recycling them, and making them more viable for what we have going on here today. And I think that's a good idea. Now, Richard, Mary Ann says you've got conversations with the coastal commission director. Is, is the purpose of those discussions to deal with this $800,000?
We have a call, excuse me, set for later this week, and I'll let the city manager jump in if I misstate anything here, but we have a call later this week, and one of the items on that call is, yes, it, it has to do with our decision-making and the $800,000.
What does that mean? What, what, what do you, is the purpose to try and convince the coastal commission to, to give us the $800,000, is that what you're trying to do? In that conversation?
Oh, we directed them to do.
Just asking a question.
Well, staff is going to explore with them if there are some other options, or something that, that, again, in our estimation, would be something that would be amenable to, to make the, you know, a more attractive offer to city council. So, that's, that's the discussion we're going to have with the coastal staff. I, I don't know how they're going to react to that, but, but that's the purpose of the conversation, to see if we can perhaps land on something that would be acceptable to them, that would also be acceptable to the city council.
Okay, and I don't want you guys to give away anything of what you're gonna be talking about, so my purpose here is not to try and, but, what's the argument you're gonna use that says, give it to us, don't give it to the MRCA? What is the argument you're gonna give them, that says, this is the proper way to use that money? And if you can't tell me, because you wanna keep it quiet, I understand, I'm just, I just wanna hear that argument.
Well, without getting, without revealing every card that we have in the deck, I, I think, well, I know that we're going to see if we can, if they're open to other alternative sites or other locations that aren't necessarily directly in Malibu, that perhaps might still satisfy what they're looking to do with that money.
One of the strongest arguments would be that the city council won't approve this unless they agree to shift the funds to Malibu, or at least give Malibu a veto.
The, the city, the argument is the city council will not approve the hotel, that's the argument you're gonna give to the coastal commission?
The LCPA, if they want this LCPA that they changed, they're not gonna get our approval of it unless they make that further change.
You know, Bruce, I, I think you're a smart guy, I don't know, I don't, I just don't see the strength of that argument convincing the coastal commission, that they should change what they've been sat on for the last however many number of months.
So, assume they don't make the change, then what?
I think we sent Norm out on a mission that he had very little chance of getting done. I, you know, look, Mr. Gold, four million bucks cost you to get the Crummer stuff, the property done? And that is not the very first time we, the coastal commission has held people up for what they wanted to do. Look, they are one of the strongest bodies in California. I don't think they're one of the best bodies, I mean, I, you know, I understand what they're doing to try and open up the, the beach for everybody, but boy, they have, the power's gone to their heads, and they just do whatever the hell they want, and they've been able to get away with it. I mean, you know, the guy, what's his name, Wade Crowfoot up in Sacramento, alright, he, he runs the coastal commission and the MRCA, alright, I mean, he had the ability to-
And state parks.
And state parks. I mean, so there is some, some process of, you know, being able to manage these people, and make sure they're not doing something that is wrong for the city, or, they're all happy with what they're doing. They're happy, right? So, with all the work that's gone into this project, I think Norm has put, put together a reasonable effort to try and move the funds out of a low-income camping process in Ramirez Canyon. I think I agree with what the mayor said, you know, Joe's not stupid, he said, sure, I won't use it in, in Ramirez Canyon, I don't know where to, he's gonna use it someplace. You know, Joe, Joe's been playing this game as long as, longer than we have. So, I'm in favor of moving this project forward. I would take a motion that says, you know, let's put it together, subject to whatever you guys come up with in your conversations with the coastal commission, and if you've got a better solution to this thing, if you're able to convince the coastal commission that there's a better way to use this money, I think somehow I wanna make sure we get that in whatever resolution we put together, right? But, absent that, I think I'm gonna vote for the hotel.
Paul?
I was fortunate enough a couple weeks ago to have a private meeting with some members of coastal staff, and I spoke to them about what we could do or not do, and I think I got some good advice, and, and one of the bits of advice I got would be to get cozy with state parks, and see if we could get an ongoing relationship with them about, about the Topanga Ranch Park that they wanna build there, because they are gonna do some housing in there. And we've gotta get them to sign up to be our partner on that. And the next time this is in front of us, with the next project, or any other low-income housing projects, money we have, we would have a, an acceptable place to direct it to. And the big problem that they had with us in our process here, is we couldn't show them a project to direct it to, that we were involved with. So, we gotta build those relationships, put them in place, and be ready for the, for what happens in the future, no matter what.
And this is off the topic, so I'm gonna make it quick, but, at the current moment, despite efforts of the planning director and the city manager to deal with the coastal commission, we're not exactly in bed with the coastal commission, alright? And I believe that we're some, and we do this work project exercise we're going through, I do believe, if we're gonna make this thing any better, we've gotta find somebody who is going to be a full-time contact with the coastal commission, attend the meetings, tell our story when they're there, we've talked to the, to the executive director, to make sure they, they understand what we're trying to, we got 15 million visitors a year, it's not like we're keeping people out of this place, alright? I don't think that sinks them, they're so, but I, I just think we've gotta sort of change our approach, if somewhere down the line, we're gonna have a better opportunity to work with the coastal commission and get them to agree with us. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
It's okay. Doug?
Yeah, as I said earlier, I'd like to make a motion for approval, I think it's very important that we do provide a window or capability for the staff to have a good negotiation with coastal commission. And I think what I'm gonna propose is not an approval of the project, but it is a step to move this so we stay in a timeframe, so that we can get this project approved in time to meet the, I believe it's August the 8th deadline that we have with the coastal commission. So, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to return with an item at the next meeting, that would allow us to accept the coastal commission's changes to the LCPA for the Seaview Hotel. And is that an ordinance that we need, or is that just a resolution?
It will be, it will be an ordinance.
It will be an ordinance, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so, Mary Ann, did you have anything further?
No, I agree with council member hearings, or mayor pro temp hearings, that we do need to be establishing relations with agencies that we believe are more in line with our goals as a city, and I would encourage us to, to work with state parks, and any of their funding agencies that they may have out there, or funding partners that may, they may have. But, you know, I, I would definitely stand on, standing on 12.10 of the LIP, stating that the money is supposed to be directed to the city.
I'm, I'm confused about this $4 million issue from Crummer. If it was, if the money was for Malibu, how did it end up not being Malibu? You, you can come up and explain that, because I, I doubt that the deal was, it was Malibu's to use as its cease fit for low-cost accommodations, and yet it got taken away, there must be more to the story than that.
Yes, yeah, thank you, mayor. So, it was, it was, there were a number of benefits or mitigations that were part of the Crummer entitlements. The city received the one and three-quarter acres at Bluffs Park.
Just talk about the $4 million.
And, and then they, and received, and the city received a million dollars. The, the $4 million, which started out at $500,000 many years earlier, was what they saw for mitigation from the change of, for the change of zoning. They took the interpretation that the project was zoned CV2, Commercial Visitor Serving 2, which is a high priority, in the LCP, it was zoned PD, Plan Development, and they took the position that, there was a condition precedent that didn't happen, so it remained CV2. The city and, and city attorney took the position that it was zoned PD, and we could do the five houses and recreation as a right, because that's the way it was zoned. So, it was either litigate with them, or pay a mitigation fee, and that started out at $500,000, and ultimately ended up to be $4 million.
But it wasn't $4 million that was to be paid to the city of Malibu?
It was never to be paid to the city.
And, and then they, the city lost it because it didn't have a project, which I believe is what it sounded like you said earlier.
No, we, we, they wanted the money to be spent, they, coastal, wanted the money to be spent within the city of Malibu, because that's where the project-
But the money didn't go to Malibu under the deal, so-
Correct, because there was no place to do it.
Thank you, that's, that's what I thought, I just wanna get that clarification, because it sounded like you were saying Malibu lost the money when it didn't have a project. Because as Mary Ann correctly points out, we don't have to have a shovel-ready project, there's no time limit on how, when we have to spend the money, we don't even, we don't even technically have to spend it in Malibu, but we get to decide how to spend money that gets paid to Malibu as INLU fee. So, I just wanted to be sure I understood that, because-
But, but my understanding of this, that, that the city is getting that, that money as well, there's, there's, there is a part of money that's going to the city for the, for the LIP section 12.
Let's, just to be clear, though, that there was never any $4 million that went to Malibu that was lost because Malibu didn't have a project for it?
I, I can't say that, if Malibu had a project, the money could've been directed here.
Yes, but the money didn't go to Malibu, and Malibu lost it because Malibu didn't have a project.
I'm sorry, I lost you on that one, sorry, mayor.
It's fine.
I was just gonna say, we don't know the answer to that, because I don't think that was ever explored.
If we had a project, we might, you might've gotten the money here.
Jefferson's here, were you on council at that time? Do you, I mean, if we wanna continue down this conversation, I don't know.
Thank you, Mary Ann, yes, I was on council, we did vote on that, and you can look it up in the records, but we had a lot of difficulties with that, because it was the same situation that Norm is going through right now. And those are difficult times, and you're faced with the same decisions now. Thank you.
So, so my last comment is, I'm, I'm disappointed that the council seems to be changing where it's going with no facts changed. It makes it look like the vote that we had in April was a bluff, and it makes it, it sends a message to coastal and others, that the decisions of this council may not necessarily really be the decisions of this council, because council members are bluffing. Because the reason that the council declined to move forward last time, was because the money was not gonna be directed, to be spent as Malibu sees fit for low-cost accommodations, or at least provide a veto. I remember the conversation very vividly, and that's still the facts. The only thing that's changed is a commitment not to use it for Ramirez, and as I said, and as is incontrovertibly correct, money's fungible, so if you give somebody $800,000 for one thing, you're freeing up $800,000 they already have for the other thing that they agree not to spend it for. So basically, if we go forward now and approve this revised plan, we've said we bluffed last time- we've said we bluffed last time. We blinked. The applicant was never really in jeopardy. So I can't bring myself to approve it. But unless there's any further comments, we can... Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I don't think that I would necessarily agree that that's where I stand. I just understand the timeline. So I'm willing to allow the process to play out and give our staff the time to have the conversations. You know, it's unfortunate that they weren't able to schedule a meeting before this time. But my potential yes vote to bring an ordinance back is just that. Bring it back so we can have that discussion at that time. I'm not saying one way or another, I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to wait until we have staff tell us what the results of these conversations are. I'm hoping that Coastal will hear us, and they will respect us, that this money should be coming to the city of Malibu, and we should be the responsible party to make a decision on how it's spent. And I hope that, you know, their staff and the executive director and, you know, maybe even the commission will respect this council to adhere to the local coastal program and the words that they wrote for us. And just live by their words is what I'm hoping. But yeah, I... There's no guarantee I'm going to vote for it pending those conversations.
Any further comments? Steve?
Doug, your motion said bring back a resolution approving the project, right?
Approving a project. It doesn't say we're approving the project tonight. It just says we'll have a vehicle in front of us to do it if we... It doesn't say that we're going to be approving the project tonight. It just says we're going to have a vehicle that can do it. And it doesn't... It leaves it open for what the planning commissioner, the planning director, and the city manager are able to negotiate with Coastal Commission.
Well, yeah. And that's my point. I guess if they come back with a resolution that says, you know, here we can approve it based upon what we know today, but if the conversation with the Coastal Commission produces a better result, we should get... Have that in front of us also, in terms of something we can vote on, I think. Right?
That's right. This is just... This is just an empowering motion, in my judgment.
So it's almost like you need two motions. One, this is what we know. And if we learn something better, come back with a better... Another motion that identifies that different alternative.
Yeah. And my motion was to direct staff to return with an ordinance for the next meeting that would allow us to accept the Coastal Commission's changes. It doesn't say what those changes, you know, how we're structured. It's just... It's a ticket to go see the next show.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity if they do have the ability to negotiate.
Don't turn down a better offer.
You got it.
That's right.
And Bruce, you know... Look, I've agreed with you on a lot of stuff. So it's... And I don't think my prior vote was a bluff. I think, as, you know, I look at the world around me and say, some things I'm... We're able to accomplish, and some things I'm just, you know, shoveling sand against the tide. And I think if... I think an effort was made. I know Norm agonized over this thing. And I know he tried. He had conversations with the Coastal Commission. He had conversations with Joe Edmiston. You know, we didn't give Norm a vehicle that says, Joe... Or, you know, go to the Coastal Commission, give me the $800,000 bucks, and here's what we're going to do with it. He didn't have that. We didn't give him the tools he needed to be successful. So I think holding him responsible for that and saying that we didn't try, I just don't agree with it. It was not a bluff. I think we tried the best we could. We did not have all the tools in our bag to make it work, and that's the result that we got. So back to you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
That's good. Paul, it looks like you want to comment?
Let's just call a question.
Well, I still have another comment. Again, I always allow everyone to speak before we vote. Do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I think that primarily, when it went off to Coastal, we thought that we were going to get something back. But we did... We got back something that was not what we expected. It was not what Norm expected. And we reacted by being extremely irritated. And I think that that's... That's where that 401 came from. And I think that it's... If we can get something better than this, great. But we're... Time is running out. And I would love very much to vote on this so we can move on with... To the last item on the agenda.
Okay. So I didn't make a vote based on any irritation. I made my vote based on my substantive analysis of what was before us. And I suspect that's true of the others that voted against it as well. I was going to say, you know, I'll make a proposed friendly amendment, which I suspect is going to be rejected, but I'm going to make it, and I'll explain why I'm making it. The friendly amendment proposal is that it... That the resolution only come back to us if Coastal agrees to provide a seat at the table for Malibu in the determination of the expenditure of the money. And by the seat of the table, I mean it'll either be spent as Malibu directs, subject to the Coastal Commission's veto, or Malibu has a veto on how it's spent as directed by the Coastal Commission or the MRCA. And the reason I say that is, look, as everyone has noticed, said, and noted, the Coastal Commission's not stupid. If we don't put that on there, we're telling them explicitly that we are bluffing and that we were bluffing. I appreciate Mary Ann's statement that she's not sure yet where she... How she'll come out. But the fact is, nothing has changed. So we were here in April, and in April, we didn't have that right. And we said, "We're not going to approve this without having that." Here we are today. We don't have that right. Steve's already said, "Ask for it, but if they don't give it to us, I'll still vote for it." Well, that's basically not asking for anything. If you, you know, when... Everyone who negotiates knows, if you say, "How about you take some money off of that price, but I'm going to pay you the full price you're asking if you don't," you're not getting anything changed. So I've said I'm not in favor of this. Mary Ann says she's not sure yet, although the facts haven't changed, and she previously opposed it. Steve said, "I'm going to approve it, but let's ask." Doug, I think, said, "I'm going to approve..." Doug was in favor of approving it. It didn't matter if we get the change or not. But if you accept the friendly amendment, then that would mean if we approve that, they have to make the change, or else we're voting no, just like we did in April. But if you want to accept the friendly amendment, we're basically telling Coastal, "We have no teeth. We're a paper tiger."
Okay. I don't think that characterization is correct of what we are, whether we're bluffing or anything else than this. This is an opportunity to move to the next stage and see what we can come back with. We're not voting yes or no on this project. We have... And honestly, if something comes back in the next two weeks that we don't like, nobody's committed one way or the other to vote positively or negatively. Let's see what we get. And that's the ticket we're trying to buy. It's not a yes or no vote on this project. It is a ticket to see the next phase and move this along so we meet the deadlines that are imposed on us by Coastal.
To be clear, it would need to be on the agenda at the next meeting, the first reading, in order to be able to complete the second reading before the deadline. This is the last chance at the next meeting. So if it's not scheduled by default, it would be the end of it.
Last exit to Brooklyn. All right. One last...
So you don't accept the friendly amendment, right?
I don't accept the friendly amendment.
Okay.
It's a nice amendment, but no.
In your conversation with Coastal, I would ask you to ask them the question that says, "What would they need to hear from us to have given us the $800,000 and let us make the decision? What was missing from our conversation with them or our offer with them or our... Whatever the right word is, okay? Something was missing that they would wanted to see. And as a result of having that absence, they just... They voted to give it to... What would we have had to do to get that money given to Malibu? Let's just find out. So when it comes up again, we'll know where... How we're going.
Okay. Trevor, could you articulate what you understand the motion to be so we can then vote on it?
Sure. I believe the motion is to bring back an item at the next meeting that would include a draft ordinance that would allow the council to accept the changes made by the Coastal Commission to the local coastal program amendment brought forward by the Sea View Hotel.
Doug, does that reflect what you understood?
That it does.
And Paul, is that what you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. No further comments. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Takes us to the last item update regarding... I don't know. Read the law. 6B, processing fee request per Assembly Bill 2160. Again, please raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like to speak on this item, and you'll be called after the staff report. And we have no speaker slips again. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The item you have before you this evening is an item where staff is requesting direction on how to implement a recently passed Assembly bill that has to do with either a fee waiver or reduction for projects by agencies that are processing an application for habitat restoration or public access. And the goal here is to remove the... Not the city's goal, but the goal of the state when they passed this Assembly bill was to remove things that prevent... Some hindrances that prevent public access projects and projects that go towards the environment. And so that's why we're here this evening, because the city does process applications by other state agencies. For example, we've worked with a nonprofit on a dune restoration. We process vertical accessways for both MRCA, the California Coastal Commission. We've worked with the Coastal Conservancy. I don't believe they actually submitted, but we've worked with other agencies to move forward with these kinds of projects. These projects are processed as coastal development permits. What you have before you here is just a rough example of the fees that the city currently charges for these types of projects. Our coastal development fee is about $6,600. That's the planning department's fee. Along with that, though, the city charges a fee for its other reviewers. So the two in-house reviewers are the Public Works Department and the city's environmental health administrator. And you see their fees there. They're an hourly fee, but on average, that's about what something like this would cost. And then we also utilize consulting services. So we have a city biologist, city coastal engineering staff, and geotechnical staff. And on average, that's about the hourly rate... Or, excuse me, those fees reflect the hour... The number of hours per their hourly rate for this type of review. So the city in general charges close to $11,000. There are some additional fees, depending on the SEQA preparation and the filing fees. If it's a categorical exemption, we do file a notice of exemption with the county of LA. It's about $75, I want to say. The Coastal Commission, they have a different fee schedule. I did speak with Coastal staff about that. They essentially do not charge a coastal development permit fee. And their fee schedule is such that the CDP fee encompasses all of the technical reviews as well. They don't have a breakdown like we have here. One major difference is that apparently they focus in on grading. And depending on the amount of grading you do, there's an additional fee, if you will, that goes along with it. But staff explained to me that they don't have a variance-finding fee or any other discretionary reviews, is what I was told by the staff member in the Ventura office. They just have basically CDP fees for commercial and residential property... Projects. So the purpose of this Assembly bill essentially would... The goal is to kind of level the field there. And so if the state would process the CDP for free, the goal is that so would cities or else... Or at least do some sort of reduction. Or else that state agency, nonprofit, could then take the project to the Coastal Commission for processing. We have received to date one request, and that comes from MRCA. They have a project for a new vertical accessway at La Jusa Beach. MRCA is actually requesting that we refund all their fees, including fees paid since 2007. And I did check with Trevor and Pat Donigan on this matter. We did not see anything in the legislation that said this was retroactive. This is something that went into effect this year and applies to moving forward. MRCA feels otherwise. Essentially, in their email, I want to say that I was told if the code was silent on it, that means it allows for it. That... Something to that effect. But MRCA has requested a fee waiver for their La Jusa Beach project. And as I mentioned, the majority of their fees were paid prior to this year. What staff is looking for tonight is direction on how to move forward. Should we consider... And these are some various scenarios, of course, just to start the conversation this evening. Looking at waiving or reducing the coastal development permit fee, but the other fees to go for the other city reviewers, the staff time and city staff time and city consultant time be charged? Or an option, of course, would be to look at reducing or waiving fees for city staff but charge the direct costs associated with the consultants? Or if the council chooses, look at waiving or reducing fees across the board? So that would be both for the CDP fees, the city staff, and the consultants. The second part of the direction that staff is requesting is how in the future would the council like staff to address these types of requests when they come in? Would staff... Oh, excuse me. Staff would like to know if the council would like staff to just present these requests to the city manager for their decision? Or process the request through an application process and bring it before the planning commission or the city council? So those are the parts of the two questions that we have this evening. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
I have two questions before we go to public comment. Is there any public comment? First... That wasn't one of my questions.
No, we don't have any speaker slips or any raised hands from the public.
Okay. So that will close public comment. I have two questions to start off the comments. First of all, so hypothetically, there's an issue of... As Steve spoke earlier tonight, about a trail that the MRCA is developing along... Through neighborhoods. Is that assuming, for the sake of argument, that that would require a CDP? I know there's a dispute about that. But if that would require a CDP, would the failure to waive the fees allow them to go directly to Coastal to get that CDP for that trail and not have to deal with the city of Malibu?
It's my understanding that a failure to reduce or waive the fees would allow them the opportunity to do that.
So that would be the type of thing that would be covered by this?
Correct. It's public access.
Okay. Second question I have is what fees must be free to avoid the legislative bypass and what fees don't need to be waived in order to avoid the legislative bypass?
Certainly, I'll, I'll let our interim city attorney speak in case I misspeak here, but it's my understanding, the language in, in the bill was permit processing fees be either waived or reduced, and so that would be the coastal development permit.
So the legislation says reduced?
Well, the, no. So the, the legislation is terribly crafted, and it does not define the term coastal development permit fees. So there's a big caveat, there's been no, obviously no decision law about this. You know, to be fair, you know, Coastal Commission waives everything, but they also, you know, we process other things, too. We're also looking at compliance with our municipal code and other, you know, you know, permits that are attached to any evaluation as well, which is like a conditional use permit. So it, it doesn't specifically, you know, call out what it, what it is, but it does have a provision that if there's a request for waiver and the waiver's not granted, then it would allow them to go through. So you can request either a waiver or a reduction. I don't know why anyone would request a reduction if you could request a waiver, but if they make the request and it's not granted, then it, the language says it would go.
Okay, and what, what's your understanding? If they request a waiver, what is it that needs to be waived to avoid the legislative bypass?
Well, I would say at a minimum, it's going to be the coastal development permit fee that we have here. I, I don't, you know, the SEQA fees, I would think that would be considered as environmental review, not a coastal development permit review. You know, this could be argued by differing parties, since we don't have a clear definition. And then, you know, the other, the other provisions, the position that, you know, at a minimum, the coastal development permit fee itself would need to be waived. Whether some other fees are tied so intrinsically to it is an open question. I think that we'd, we'd have to submit a waiver and then have, you know, the applicant can go and make an argument about why that fee is a coastal development fee and why it should be waived, and then the, whichever, whether it's an administrative, a staff level or a commission or council decision would weigh, you know, whether there's a benefit to that and look at the cost of the fees and then make a decision about the waiver in that situation.
Comments, questions? Mary Ann, then Paul.
Richard, could you tell us whether or not, does Coastal charge for EIRs or NCDEX? Is that also included just as part of the process of processing the CDP?
Trevor, do you wish to speak that? I think they, their attorneys might make the argument that their coastal development permit is a SEQA review, as it is an environmental document.
We don't, we don't know how that term is going to be determined. It says coastal development permit, so that's a coastal development permit fee. You know, environmental review of a, of a document, just because Coastal, the Coastal Commission is waiving that and doesn't, doesn't require payment for any type of SEQA review doesn't mean that, you know, necessarily that it's going to be interpreted that that is a type of fee that needs to be waived as part of this.
Yeah, but Mary Ann's question was simply, do they charge for that or not?
Oh, no, they do not. Right, Richard?
They did not have it on their fee schedule, nor did the staffer say they charged.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann.
I thought you said you had two questions?
No.
Oh, okay. Paul next, then Doug.
Okay. In looking at our options here, under Council Direction Item 1, it's plain that item number 1 is the, is the least we can do, right? And that's, that's what I would be in favor of there. And under Council Direction Item 2, I'm thinking that it probably makes more sense for the request to be decided by the city manager, and the staff could bring back a city council policy authorizing this protocol and any other factors to be considered by the city manager when reviewing fee requests. I, I think having the request side decided by the Planning Commission or the City Council is not going to result in, in happy times for anybody.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
May I make a friendly amendment?
Sure, please.
We don't have, we don't have a second yet.
I'll second it and make a friendly amendment request.
Okay, I'll consider accepting your friendly amendment.
Is it possible that we can give staff direction to engage either the legislature or other body to clean up some of this so we have a better idea of exactly what's supposed to be in this?
You can absolutely reach out to our, our consultants, add that as a, as a friendly amendment, and the city manager can start that process and work with, we have a subcommittee that already works on those issues.
Yeah, I don't think we even need to have that as part of a formal motion.
You can.
Well, I would like to direct staff to, to do that because I don't want to just leave this open for any future council to deal with. So I think, I think we need to adopt it. I don't think we want to see any project bypass us, so do what we need to do to make sure they stay here. But secondary, I think it would be good to find out, you know, how we can educate legislators on how they should be processing bills and maybe at least reaching out to all the cities of what the effect of this is going to be on them financially, at the minimum.
Paul, you accept that?
I, I accept that, and I think that it probably is, is, it'd be a wonderful thing if everything that they wrote was, what they wrote is a genius of brevity. Unfortunately, it, it leaves a lot to be decided, so, yeah. It, it would be great if perhaps our representative in Sacramento could get us some feedback from the correct person without offending whoever it is that authored this.
Doug?
Yeah, I guess to Trevor or Richard, as I read this, it's almost like they want everybody to give a friends and family discount to the associated agencies. Does this, and as I was trying to read the, the language on this, obviously, and I agree with Paul and Mary Ann, the CDP fee is, is probably what they're after first, but what about out-of-pocket expenses? Is that clearly not something that we would be asked to waive? And what I mean by that is like a geology, outside geologist report or some kind of, some kind of expense we have to write a check for to somebody else?
Anything the applicant generates on their own wouldn't do anything. If there's outside consultants by the city that are part of the process, I think it's a case-by-case basis looking at that, but it's not clear that that was intended by the legislature to be encompassed within this.
Okay. And, and then the question I've got really to Richard, how much is this really going to cost us? I mean, I, I agree, we're, we're not going to let the, any agency bypass us for this, but if, is this a $50,000 a year loss of revenue, or is this $10,000, or what?
If the council chooses just to limit this to coastal development permits, I would say it's a loss of the income of one coastal development permit for every couple of years. I think we see one access project on average, maybe two to three years, and so you'd look at the $7,000 over that.
So it's de minimis, is what you're?
Yes, in the grand scheme of things, yes. It's, they, they don't usually have multiple applications going at once.
Probably costs more to pass the legislation than it's ever going to save. All right, that's all I have. I'm, I'm ready to vote.
I'm going to suggest something slightly different, but Steve, did you have a comment?
No, just, I think Doug got the answer, I mean, the question, what's this going to cost us? And I think for $7,000 to keep it from going to the Coastal Commission, I'm willing to live with that.
Okay, so, so first of all, a side comment on this issue of the refund. I, I have, I have a hard time believing they'd be entitled to a refund on, for fees that they previously paid, but I absolutely could see the argument that they have a right to stop paying the fee going forward, or else they can just skip us and go forward. So I would, I would want this to, whatever we decide is going to apply to the ongoing application. I think a more sensible way to approach, not that, that the motion isn't sensible, it is, but I, I think a better, a safer way to approach this is to avoid any accidental failure to waive and thereby allow a bypass of the city is for us to actually resolve that any application for a waiver, which if not granted, would result in bypassing the city, shall be granted. And we don't have to specify what that means, that can be, that can be figured out by the city attorney in consultation, but, well, by the city manager in consultation with the city attorney. So if we, if we resolve that any fee, which if not waived, would result in a bypass, is waived, there can never be a bypass. So I, I think that's a safer way to approach it, rather than just say, whenever a waiver is requested, the city manager should get to decide it, because city manager could fail to do it for, for great reasons, just fail to do it in time, and we've lost it. The city manager could, for some reason, make a decision not to waive, and we've lost it. So if we want to avoid any waivers, whether intentional or unintentional, the better way to approach, to approach that would just be to use the exact language necessary to avoid any waivers. And so I'd ask that you substitute the motion for that, but if not, you know, so be it.
Well, maybe I can ask a clarifying question. Just as part of the coastal development permit application, should the waiver be included in that packet and thereby fees are not collected at the time of submission and during the process of the review? None of these reviews happen quickly. We're, we're talking several weeks to several months at the minimum that it's going to take to do this. The city manager should be able to, to make a determination on a fee waiver with, prior to it going to Planning Commission hearing, and it doesn't get scheduled for a Planning Commission hearing unless the determination's made. So, I mean, I don't think that that's an issue that, that they're, I would, sorry. I would say that if you are concerned about that, that we direct staff to accept the application, including the waiver request, and that prior to scheduling of a Planning Commission hearing, that a determination is made whether or not the fees are waived or not, and that we're essentially waiving them at that point. Does that make sense to anybody? I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if, I would assume when they come in and look for a waiver, they want that upfront, right? I mean, I, I don't think they're going to sit back and say, okay, do the work and we'll figure out what the number is later on. I would think they're going to say, what's this going to cost me? And if they don't like the number, they go to the Coastal Commission. So I don't know, I don't know how doing it after the work has been done or after the work has been submitted works.
If I'm the, if I'm the MRCA or any other public agency, I'm going to say, give me a waiver, and then you don't say yes, I'm saying, fine, bye.
Adios.
Doug?
I, I think you make a good point, Bruce, about the language that might be with the city manager, but I think the recommendation on direction, item number two, direction one, says that staff to bring back city council policy authorizing the protocol and other factors. I think you just wrote the protocol for them, so let them write it and bring it back, that's what the motion is.
Bruce?
Good, Paul.
Bruce, do I understand you, you are specifically saying that we shouldn't be asking them to come back with it be on Council Direction Item 1, number one, which would be we charge the coastal development permit fee, we're waiving, and all the other fees would be charged for staff time and city consultants?
Yeah.
So your concern is that, that they're going to say, no, I want everything waived, and if they're right, that that is required to be waived, then we've blown it by not waiving it. So I would, I would say that, that, that we, the direction should be to come back with a city council policy that, that waives any fee that must be waived if requested to avoid the bypass.
Yeah, okay.
Look, let me be the MRCA for a moment. I know I can get the fee waived when I go to the Coastal Commission.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go to you guys and say, are you going to charge me for this? And if you say yes, I'm going to the Coastal Commission. And we're, we're dealing with $7,000 a year. This is jump change.
It's not $7,000. That is the fee for the coastal development permit on the fee schedule. To submit an application, you're looking at between $10,000 and $15,000 for a coastal development permit, once you factor in all the other stuff. I, I'm not saying that we should, we shouldn't waive it. We absolutely should waive it because they've pinned us into a corner. If we don't waive the fees, everything's going to go to Coastal, and we're going to have no input on these things whatsoever. So we need to waive every fee associated, because the way Coastal's fee schedule is, they charge a flat fee and include everything, where we do it as an à la carte thing, and you get documented how much you're spending for each particular item. So, trust me, I've filled out hundreds of coastal development permit fee calculations, and it's, it's much more expensive than just $7,000.
I think I'm ready to accept that friendly amendment you just laid out so wonderfully.
Well, it's, it's, it's really not an amendment so much as a substitute, because it eviscerates the original.
Richard, are you comfortable doing that? I mean, because you know MRCA or somebody's going to come in and say, I want a waiver. You're going to say, I mean, the only other thing you may think, if, does the Coastal Commission charge anything? Do we know that they have, will there be any fee if this person goes to the Coastal Commission to get something done? Because the other option is, let's take a look at what the Coastal Commission does and just mirror them and waive everything up to that point. I don't know if that make, if there's enough money, you know, involved in doing that to go through that effort.
They don't charge agencies, it's just free.
Yeah, well, then, it's, it's a freebie.
Our applicant, the applicant we're going to be dealing with is the, has gotten in trouble by not applying to us and also not applying to the county. So I think that, I think that you're correct, we have to do whatever it is to keep it here. So.
All right, so, so the proposal.
So we need to, we need to rephrase, we need a new motion.
So Trevor, the motion was made and seconded, the maker of the motion is willing to withdraw it, does, we have to withdraw from the second as well?
Yes, we need to both, we need to withdraw, and then you can make a new motion.
Mary Ann, are you willing to have a substitute motion?
I am willing to withdraw.
Okay. Just one last comment, I'll, I'll articulate it again, but I have just one comment. We, we have a habit up here, I, I try not to do it, and I think I don't, of personifying agencies by people who are in them, and I think that's a mistake. I, I think we should refer to the MRCA and not to any particular individual when we're talking about them. It is an agency, just, just, just as people don't criticize us by identifying specific people, as they shouldn't. So that's just my comment. So the, the motion is that we, the staff come back with a resolution which directs that any fee which must be waived to avoid bypass of the city's processes is waived. And then it's up to the city attorney, working with the city manager, to figure out what they may be, but it sounds like it's going to be every fee.
And the determination's to be made by the city manager, right? Not, not by the Planning Commission.
No, I'm, I'm saying that the resolution is that the fees are hereby waived when they must be. Doesn't, no one makes a decision, that, that resolution would be the waiver.
So does it matter what public agency and/or nonprofit comes before the city? Do you want a review of that applicant to be completed? Or just anybody who has, so is a nonprofit and/or a public agency doing a public access or habitat restoration project is automatically waived?
That's, that was.
Who's reviewing that application? Or what documentation are we keeping with this? Because, I mean, I can see finance, how are we, our auditors are going to wonder why we're waiving all these fees? Am I?
They just decide whether we collected the money we're supposed to collect and didn't, and paid out the money we're supposed to pay out.
I, I think we can have the, the policy come back, which will lay out the process of how the, an application for a waiver, the evaluation of, it needs to meet the criteria there, but if it is, then it's granted, and that it'll be reviewed by the city manager that does need for that determination that makes that.
Right, the review is a ministerial review to determine whether it meets the criteria, not to determine whether to grant the waiver.
Exactly, not discretionary review, you're looking for a ministerial review. So it's a, it's a duty that if it's met, then it needs to be granted.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so Paul, will you second that?
Why not?
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protemmure?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we almost finished by 10 o'clock. I'll take responsibility for us not having done that. The meeting is adjourned in memory of Barry Hilton and Leah Isaacs.
Cool, thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Adios, everybody.
Ciao. Bella.